gratitude and knowledge, the Federal Way will cherish the memory of their beloved husband and father. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council of the City of Federal Way, call upon all citizens and upon our patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the day of Friday, June 23rd, 2017, in recognition of the service, sacrifice, and life of Lieutenant Vince Ferranda, Deputy Fire Marshal, by flying your American flags proudly in Vince's honor. Sign this 20th day of June, 2017. And I also have a city flag that I will present to the Ferranda family in just a few moments. But I want to say, in learning and in hearing about Vince's passing, I just wanted to say that, I had spoke with several members of the police, of the fire department, and he actually said something that I say a lot, and it really rung true to me. People who know me know that I talk about, when I talk to citizens of Federal Way, I frequently say, "I work for you." When I, when I talk to Gordy, Deputy Chief Goodsell, and several other members of the fire department, that actually was something that Vince used to say a lot, "I work for the citizens of this community." And that's what all of us here on the dais, and all of us, the fire commissioners that we mentioned before, and we've got Jim Fossos, who, the remaining fire commissioner, who's now entered the room, each and every person that serves this community, serves the people of this community. And while Vince was not a city employee, he worked for each and every person in this community, and we appreciate his sacrifice and the sacrifice of his family. So at this time, I will present the city flag of the City of Federal Way to Vince's Let's give a round of applause for Vince and his family. A grateful community says, "Thank you." Okay, there is, speaking of the fire department, as we were putting together today's agenda, and I don't know if anybody can hear me in the back room, but can we put forward the pictures of the fire incident? The words of the proclamation that we, that I just spoke a few moments ago, ring even more true and ring profoundly. When we think about the kind of danger that our firefighters face every day, this just happened just a few weeks ago in our community. We are here to thank the members of the South King Fire Department for their service on that day in which the, now the McDonald property went up in flames in our downtown, and really, there were three buildings on this site. And actually, if we can go back to that first fire, the first picture, there are three buildings on that site. The distance between each building is really probably less than 10 to 15 feet. It is quite frankly astounding that two building, at least two buildings, if not all three buildings, did not go up in flames. But thank you to the fast and professional service and courageous service of our South King County firefighters. They were able to salvage each one of those buildings and the businesses. The businesses that were in that first building, I believe we lost seven individual businesses. Those are, those are people's careers, those are people's, you know, retirements and in their lives wrapped up into those businesses. And while we're thankful to the work of the people here at the city to help those transitions, we are so fortunate that this city did not lose those other two buildings. So Chief, can you please perhaps approach the podium and introduce some of your key personnel and talk about how many people responded? My understanding is, a million gallons of water was used to put out that fire. Chief?
Lot of water, lot of water. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Indeed, as Lieutenant Ferranda stated, we work for the community, which includes the business community. The incident commander of the fire that night, Battalion Chief Joel Barrett, probably the biggest fire he's seen in his career, might be the biggest fire he'll ever see in his career, but you just never know. And all of our firefighters that were involved at the scene did their best to make sure that we maintained the fire in that one building. When they pulled up, they knew it was pretty much going to be a total loss, but they kept water on it, and then they used exposure protection to protect the other buildings to try and keep the other businesses in operation, and they did a great job of it. Again, the support of the commissioners, the support of the firefighters, the support of the entire community allows us to pay it forward and to take care of the community and the citizens that we work for. But perhaps Battalion Chief Barrett might like to say a couple of words about the fire?
Please. Battalion Chief?
Hello. I'm Battalion Chief Joel, I happened to be on duty that day. I was in charge of the fire, I showed up first with the first picture, and that second building was my main concern, that it didn't catch fire. So all my resources went to that exposure, and the fire got bigger in the other building, and unfortunately, we lost all those businesses. So, it was a huge loss, but I think it was a big save as well.
Battalion Chief, how many firefighter personnel did you have on scene?
It was a two alarm, and there was probably around 12 fire engines and four lighter trucks.
Wow. How many total people is that?
Ooh, roughly 50. Give or take a few.
That's great. I went out there, and I, well, you see, you could see a little bit of charring on the, what do you think that distance is between the first building and the second building?
Probably by land, 20 feet by the roofs, maybe 10 to 15, like you pointed out.
Okay. That's great. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much. Heroes all. And that's the thing about, you know, 911 and our emergency personnel, be it our police department or our fire department, when it really, really matters, that's who we call and this is who shows up. So, very important stuff. Thank you very much. Okay, we have some very deserving folks here. We've got certificates of recognition for the Todd Beamer High School Boys 4A State Soccer Champions. And we'll turn it over, yeah, here, here. Now I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Selsky, but as we were creating this agenda, and we were trying to figure out, you know, who was, who in the council and/or myself were going to do the honors, Councilmember Selsky says, "Well, hold on here." He was a 1974 or '05?
Three and four.
Okay. Graduate of Federal Way High School and participated in the very first organized soccer games and teams here in the City of Federal Way for high schools. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Bob Selsky.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, for allowing me to, the privilege of being able to do this honor tonight for this group of gentlemen who earned great distinction. You've made our community proud, you've made our city proud, and we're so glad you could be here tonight to celebrate with us and be honored, because I know, and we, the council and mayor know, this is, we believe, the third time you've assembled as a team to be recognized for your accomplishments. So, thank you for being here tonight. We know some of you are seniors and probably have other things to be doing, so we appreciate you being here tonight. So congratulations on a magnificent season. You know, you, like I say, you made the community proud, it took something special for this group to amass a record of 19 wins, one loss, and one tie. And what's really remarkable, what's really remarkable is, in both the semifinal and the final, the team fell to one goal, to nothing disadvantage, and came back and won both of those games. So, that's something, that just says a lot about you, it says a lot about your team. And so, I want to recognize also Coach Joel Lindberg, and really his prophetic statement right at the beginning of the year, and early in the season, when he said, "No reserves, no retreats, no regrets." And those are powerful words to live by, and you gentlemen did that all through the year. And so, that's tremendous. I'd also like to recognize Athletic Director Tim Quikendall for his role in helping this team achieve what it did as well, so. But anyway, you guys earned something special, you know, this is a memory you're going to carry on with you forever, and so I commend you for that. Like the mayor said, I'll go back to the inaugural season of soccer in the Federal Way School District. The very first year was 1973, 1974, when the district organized teams in the South Puget Sound League to play soccer. And so, I was on that team, but I will tell you, we definitely did not have the skills and talent of this fine-tuned machine right here. We were really just a bunch of football players, a bunch of, you know, football jocks that were out on the soccer field, doing the best we could not to pick up the ball and run with it. So, so, but anyway, I commend you for what you did. You know what, and I really encourage you to make this a great start to something even bigger for you and for your team. You know, keep setting high goals, work hard, perform, and go out there and make a difference. So, what I'd like to do now is call each of you, or the team and the coaching staff to come up to the podium, and I will present you the certificates of recognition from the City of Federal Way, a proud city indeed. So please, make your way up to the podium.
Over to the podium, guys.
So I'll quickly read the certificates here and what it says on them. So the City of Federal Way Certificate of Recognition presented to Coach Joel Lindberg, the rest of the coaching staff, and the players of the Todd Beamer High School Soccer Team for winning the WIAA 2017 4A Boys State Championship, the first state title in the school's history with a 2-1 championship victory over Pasco. On behalf of the mayor and the City Council of Federal Way, Washington, dated this 20th day of June, 2017, signed by the mayor and all of the city council members. So, please, a great round of applause for an outstanding accomplishment.
Thank you to the council and Bob for recognizing us. We're excited to be here today. This is the third meeting we've come to be recognized at, and I just heard some of the boys mention, "This is the best one." So we appreciate the kind words, and it's just been such an amazing ride with these guys. I'm just blessed and honored to work with such a great group of guys. It really was the way that we came together as a team. It wasn't that we're the most talented, biggest, baddest guys out there. We stuck together and just showed heart. Like you said, we went down in games and came back, and it was fantastic here, I'm so proud of these guys. Thanks a lot.
Counsel, let's, when we stay up on the dais level? Great work. Congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations. Yeah. Great job, great job, guys. Great job. All right. Great job, all right. Good job, congratulations. Congratulations. All right, guys, we'll see you next year, right?
Yes.
Nope. No pressure.
All right, that's great. Fun stuff. Okay, as we saw earlier today, we had a, an honor guard. We actually, we had a joint honor guard. I've actually never seen a joint honor guard of our fire department and our police department. The picture we have here with the big screen, or on our screens, was when we had, was the inauguration, really, of our big flagpole on 320th. And you see it, it takes several people to carry that big flag, which I think is about 25 by 30 feet. And actually, when we put it on a table, it took up almost a whole table. So, that was the police honor guard. You see our King County Councilman Pete Von Reichbauer, who we named a street after, almost, almost within eye shot of the flagpole, and we've got our honor guard members right there. I would ask our honor guard, I've got a proclamation for Honor Guards Day. Would our honor guard members, both for South County Fire and for the police department, please approach the podium? And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. I believe there was one of these at the state level as well, so. All right. Whereas Honor Guards of America, consisting of former and retired military police, firefighters, emergency medical service responders, chefs, and other agency personnel, their families and communities, face an increasingly difficult roles, they protect and serve the nation and the public, and whereas the men and women who wear these uniforms understand the dangers of their job, but they heed the call to serve and willingly face those risks every day in order to create a safe nation and communities for all Americans. And whereas Honor Guards Day recognizes and honors the sacrifices made by those who wear the uniform, plan the services for our fallen, march and present the colors with honor, stand watch over our fallen in all weather, and comfort those in duress. And whereas the City of Federal Way appreciates the sacrifices of Honor Guards and their families, and supports their efforts to keep our community a safe place to work, live, and play. Now therefore, I, the undersigned mayor of the City of Federal Way, on behalf of our 97,000 residents, do hereby proclaim Saturday, June 24th, 2017, as Honor Guards Day in the City of Federal Way, and I encourage all citizens to acknowledge and value the service provided by Honor Guards. Sign this 20th day of June, 2017. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Now, we've got the 4th of July, just right around the corner, just a few short weeks away, and we will not have another city council meeting before the 4th of July, so we're going to have a fireworks enforcement briefing from Deputy Chief Steve Neal.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, members of the audience. I want to provide you with a fireworks enforcement briefing for the 4th of July time period. And every year, we work hand in hand with the fire department to come up with the best plan possible to make sure that we have a safe and fun 4th of July season. Part of that includes the fireworks enforcement for the city. We know that, that for 24 years, fireworks have been illegal in the City of Federal Way. So, we work very hard to try to enforce that during the time period while still allowing everyone to enjoy the festivities. We do this in two ways. The first way is, we try to make sure that we're notifying the public of all the things that they can and cannot do, and we do this in a variety of ways. All of the social media outlets, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, a press release just went out today, there'll be signage around the city telling everyone about the limitations to fireworks, which, as I say, are, all fireworks are illegal in the City of Federal Way. The second part is the enforcement portion. And we not only provide enforcement during the 4th of July, which is Tuesday this year, but we also provide enforcement, or we have extra patrol on the streets of Federal Way from this year, it's the 29th of June through the 5th of July. So, during that week-long period, we use our overlap shifts, our extra patrols and that sort of thing, to handle not only the calls that come in, but also any other issue that comes up regarding fireworks within the city. When it comes to the 4th of July, we will have as many as a dozen extra units on the street just for the enforcement portion. That doesn't include all of the security and different officers that we have in the event itself, making sure that that's a safe and secure event as well. So they will be out before the festivities at Celebration Park, during the festivities, and then for a while afterwards to address any fireworks violations that are either reported or that they see or hear as best that they can. It's important to know that fireworks is a, it's a civil infraction, and the first offense is $100, the second offense is $200, and the third offense is $300. So the scenario is, we try to get the information out there to the public so that they are aware. The scenario is, you don't want to go out and spend a tremendous amount of money on a bunch of fireworks, and then have the police show up and give you a $100 infraction and also confiscate all of your fireworks. The best thing to do would be to go and enjoy the festivities at Celebration Park, the, one of the finest fireworks shows you will ever see, and not only that, but the environment there is so much fun for the families, that that is certainly the way to go. So we're going to try our best to make sure that everyone is aware of all of these issues. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
I don't have a question, I'd just like to add a little something. For those of you that have pets, fireworks really scare the heck out of them. And so, if people in your neighborhood are setting them off, please let them know that that really, really upsets cats and dogs and other little animals, and we need to be thinking about them also.
Very good.
Very true.
Did you provide the non-emergency number? Did I hear that?
It is 835-2121. 835-2121. And that is in the press releases, it'll, we will be putting that out as information to the public.
Councilmember Hunter?
Thanks for talking about this. Two years ago, we had a fire behind our house on July 5th at 4 o'clock in the morning. Thank you firefighters for coming and putting that out, and it was caused by fireworks. So, if someone hears fireworks, what should they do?
They can call the non-emergency number that I just mentioned, 835-2121, and report that, and we can have officers, as I say, we will have our officers all throughout the city in individual cars that can respond to those. The other thing that we do is, generally, on a yearly basis, we collect this data, and at the end of, on July 5th or so, we'll give another presentation that shows the data, the fireworks, the number of calls, and that sort of thing. So we try to utilize our data from years past to establish where we really try to concentrate during this time period, but the best thing is to call.
So, so if, in my neighborhood, if we hear fireworks every night, we should call every night to make sure that it's, it's reported?
That's correct, because if you're hearing it every night, probably there's a concentration there, and we'll want to get in there and try to break that up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and we're not discouraging people from calling 911, especially if they're...
Oh, no. We get thousands of calls during this week-long time period, as I say, from the 29th through the 5th, we'll get, we will receive thousands of calls, and we'll get to the, them as fast as we can, but in a situation like that, we will certainly go try to break up that concentration if we can.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think two years ago, we lost a house, a bomb in your neighborhood along the BPH.
Yeah, camp, up by campus, it's still over by the Aquatic Center.
Right. Yeah, so, it's, you know, especially with these cedar shake roofs, it's real serious stuff, so, you know, sometimes people get a big packet, and I think what Councilmember Hunter was referring to is exactly right, that, you know, if you see people starting to ramp up their activities leading up to the 4th, or even, you know, after, make sure you call and keep calling if you've got that activity occurring in your neighborhood. All right, thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Now moving on to, we've got Joe's Creek Watershed Data Analysis and Report. Teresa Thurlow, Surface Water Manager. And then, after she gives her presentation, I'm going to have our, my senior policy advisor, Yarden Widenfeld, give a brief status update on where the litigation is at with regard to Lake Gene. Bye, you guys. Bye. Good night. Okay, Teresa?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, citizens of Federal Way. I'm Teresa Thurlow, Surface Water Manager in Public Works, and I'm here tonight to present the data analysis report for Upper Joe's Creek Watershed Nutrient Reduction Study. Upper Joe's Creek Watershed Nutrient Reduction Study was funded by a freshwater algae program grant awarded to the city in 2015. Upper Joe's Creek Watershed is this area that is outlined in this red border, and this line right here is the City of Federal Way and City of Tacoma border. The grant was put in to generate credible and valuable surface and stormwater quality and hydrologic data. We wanted to identify, and if possible, control and reduce external and surface and stormwater sources of nutrients to the Twin Lakes, which are these two lakes right here, Lake Lorraine and Lake Gene. And this is Upper Joe's Creek Watershed, this is the actual stream right here. The project team consisted of Surface Water Management Division personnel, Department of Ecology, and then our consultant for this project was Herrera Environmental Consultants, Inc. And I have here tonight Rob Zizat, which is a senior limnologist with Herrera, and he's got over 33 years of experience for complex surface and store, surface and lake management issues. And limnology is the biological, chemical, and physical study of lakes and other surface water bodies. A little bit of history before I get into the study. In 2012, the Twin Lakes Homeowners Association approached the swim staff and asked to have us take a look at what the impacts of Joe's Creek were having on the Twin Lakes. The Twin Lakes were, Lake Lorraine specifically at this time, was experiencing numerous algae outbreaks, and some of them were harmful algae blooms, also called habs. And this went on throughout 2012, and in 2014, we implemented a plan that we had developed to identify and eliminate sources of illicit discharges in Upper Joe's Creek, to try and reduce the nutrients that were in Joe's Creek and discharging into the Twin Lakes. In September of that year, Ecology responded to a letter sent to them by the Twin Lakes Homeowners Association, and they identified to the Twin Lakes Homeowners Association that a grant was available... And they identified to the Twin Lakes Homeowners Association that a grant was available called the Freshwater Algae Control Grant. And they recommended that the Twin Lakes Homeowners Association investigate the sources of phosphorus that were loading Lake Lorraine. And the staff refer to this as a phosphorus budget for further reference. In September of 2014, SWIM held a public meeting at the Twin Lakes Community Center to present the information that we had to date on blue-green algae blooms, what caused them, what we could do within our abilities of our program to help reduce the amount of algae blooms. And then, we provided information to the residents of that area about the freshwater algae grant. Twin Lakes Homeowners Association said that they were interested in this approach and were willing to pay the local match to the grant. In October of that year, we put together information for the grant and I, to identify all the sources of phosphorus loading to Lake Lorraine. And then, we notified the homeowner association of the cost of the grant match. SWIM was unable to provide that grant match as the two lakes are private lakes. And we were unable to fund a study of a private lake. Later that year in November, Twin Lakes Homeowners Association notified the city that they had taken a look at it and determined that their funds were better spent treating the lake, and they were not interested in funding the local match. In November of that year, SWIM revised the application to determine what nutrients were carried from Upper Joe's Creek watershed through the city's public MS4 into the twin lakes. And we received council authorization to apply for the Ecology's freshwater algae grant. And in 2015, we received that grant and we hired consultant Herrera. And Herrera began the work with, at that time, Dan Smith, our water quality coordinator, to develop the Quality Assurance Project Plan, which is often referred to as the QUAP. And also, we developed a dollar budget based on that QUAP. And then, we submitted that to Ecology and they reviewed it and approved it. Once it was approved, we began the study in 2016. In May of 2017, Herrera provided a draft report on the results for the analysis. And in June of this year, where we are now, the final report has been published. And tonight, I'm presenting to the city council. And we will be presenting an outreach effort to the Upper Joe's Creek Watershed residents and businesses on June 28th. And I'll have more information on that in a minute. And then, in July, we will submit the final grant documentation and close out the grant with Ecology. A little bit of understanding of a phosphorus budget. So, phosphorus comes into the water bodies in various locations. It can come in from runoff groundwater, vegetation decaying from the bottom, releasing sediment cycling can release phosphorus, and then surface stormwater. This study actually addressed the surface stormwater entering into Lake Lorraine and then Lake Gene. And what source of nutrients, how much in the way of nutrients of interest went into these lakes. It was pointed out to me later this day that we did do a, a analysis based on land use and other mathematical information to get a number for the runoff as well of the area basins. So, Twin Lakes phosphorus budget, what are we looking at? So, the question was, what part of all the phosphorus that's within the twin lakes is coming from the city's MS4, Upper Joe's Creek watershed? Which flows, as I mentioned, from Tacoma into Federal Way and then into Lake Lorraine. And as you can see, these are various sources of phosphorus that I think most of you might be familiar with, that we were identifying, we were identifying the sources of, the phosphorus, not the sources, sorry. Anyway, so our project goals were to identify the problematic surface and stor-, stormwater nutrient sources in the water, Upper Joe's Creek watershed. And to implement corrective actions for the reduction and/or elimination of these identified surface and stormwater nutrient sources through ongoing municipal and/or county code compliance. And that's our illicit discharge and detection program. Estimate external surface and stormwater nutrient loading to the twin lakes that could be used for development of phosphorus budgets and algae control plans in the future. And then, to implement a public education outreach program to help with reduction of the sources of phosphorus into the twin lakes and other nutrients of interest. So, the nutrients of interest aren't just phosphorus. Phosphorus, it's total phosphorus, soluble reactive phosphorus, which is the phosphorus that is taken up by the algae as food. And then, nitrates and nitrites, while not a primary source of food for the blue-green algae, is a source for the phylmentis algae. And then, fecal coliform bacteria. And why we're interested in this is it has the ability to help us identify possible on-site septic leaking systems. And the test does not identify whether it's a bacteria, a human, or animal. It just identifies fecal coliform in the water. So, in the study, we had the QUAP. And the QUAP was approved by Ecology. And we found these monitoring stations throughout Joe's Creek. And as I mentioned, the stream actually flows to the north. And so, our stations were identified for various land uses. So, one of those land uses was mostly undeveloped. We were able to find a station within northeast Tacoma that was primarily undeveloped land and then just a small residential piece. So, it gave us a nice undeveloped area to sample. Urbanized development, and there was a portion of the North Shore Golf Course down here. And this is North Shore Parkway right here. Downstream, this point right here is downstream of on-site septic parcels that are located within this area. Not all the parcels in this area are, have on-site septic. Some of them are not connected to the sewer, but don't seem to have any sort of development on them either. Drainage to Lake Lorraine from Joe's Creek enters at this point, Point 4, and we sampled there. And we call these points JC. So, this particular point is JC 4. JC 5 was the Lake Lorraine outlet. So, this is where Lake Lorraine dumps into Lake Gene. And then, we have an urbanized development with some forested in this area. We had an urbanized development, and this one has stormwater detention and urbanized, mostly residential with a portion of the golf course up here at the tip of Lake Lorraine. And then, we have urbanized development with no stormwater detention. So, we looked at all these sources and then we installed stream gauges because we needed the flow to calculate concentration. So, what did we find? Well, in the study, there's a lot of documentation of the data and the sampling points and the collection and all the numbers and graphs. That being said, we had a comparison table within the report that compared our stream, Upper Joe's Creek, with the medians for other streams, small streams within King County, which have a similar land use. And this right here, this column, is Upper Joe's Creek base flow, and this is Upper Joe's Creek storm flow. And these are King County streams with their basin storm flow. Why do basin storm flow matter? Base flow is that natural flow that's composed primarily of subsurface water that rises into the stream. And that gives us a nice background sample for groundwater. And then, storm flow is that flow that has precipitation and direct runoff from impervious surfaces, and it's added to the base flow for a total. So, two different sources of flow in there. So, these graphs put together, these are graphs that take that table I just showed you and gives you a graphical representation of what we're looking at. So, the blue box here is Joe's Creek, Upper Joe's Creek. And this red box right here is the range of values for the medians found in the streams within King County with similar land use. So, what we found is for base flow, total phosphorus was within the range of similar streams within King County with an urban environment. And then, we found the same for storm flow, that our stream, Joe's Creek, was within the same range for similar streams within King County. I did want to mention on the total phosphorus, the maximum total phosphorus concentrations typically occurred July to October. And the summer storms had the highest concentration. And the lowest total phosphorus was the winter base flow. So, and the highest concentration across all the stations at one point was the base flow of JC 2. And when we come on to the SRP, this one, as I mentioned, is of interest because this is what plants uptake to, to grow. And as you can see, the base flow for SRP is within the range of similar streams. What you'll see here is that our storm flow, however, is elevated above this range of creeks within similar urban environments. For nitrates and nitrogen, as you can see, again, we were within the similar ranges for other creeks within the King County. And then, the same for fecal, fecal coliform bacteria. Storm flow and base flow both had within the range. However, one station, JC 3, did show elevated fecal concentrations, which could indicate the presence of leaking on-site septic systems, which we'll investigate further. However, the report indicated that they are not a large source of total phosphorus into Joe's Creek, into Lake Lorraine. So, when we come to the loading of the lakes, what we're looking at is, Upper Joe's Creek is this blue area right here. And this is the amount of nutrient loading into Lake Lorraine. And then, these are the storm drains in the red. Where's mine? There we go. These here are the storm drains, the outfalls that fall directly into Lake Lorraine. And this right here is Lake Gene. And this is the pass-through that comes in Lake Lorraine and goes out to Lake Gene. This right here in the yellow is the export that is added to, that that's been put into Lake Lorraine and exported to Lake Gene. So, there's actually more coming out of Lake Lorraine in the way of total phosphorus than is at, being added by Joe's Creek. And then, the Lake Gene storm drain outfalls. You can see this is a small area. So, the conclusions of the studies found that Upper Joe's Creek has nutrient concentration similar to other King County streams, with the exception of SRP during a storm flow. There were other sources of phosphorus and nutrients not studied in this study for loadings in the, in the, the twin lakes. Other sources may contain total phosphorus loadings in the summer growing season. Reduction in the overall total phosphorus loadings to the lakes, both the Lake Gene and Lake Lorraine, is needed to reduce the amount of algae growth and the frequency of the algae blooms within the lakes. And it was recommended that a lake restoration analysis be done to develop a long-term, cost-effective approach to identify all the sources of phosphorus going into the lake, or lakes, sorry, and develop a plan. So, the study is actually available on the Public Works SWIM webpage. Let's see if this link works. Okay. Well, that is where the study is located, and I will see about getting an updated link on that. The total sum of what we found was that 73 kilo-, 73.5 kilograms per year of phosphorus, total phosphorus, is entering into Lake Lorraine from Upper Joe's Creek watershed. And then, 79.9 kilograms per year is exiting Lake Lorraine and going into Lake Gene. So, oh, and as you saw earlier, we had a question mark on which amount of that pie circle was Joe's Creek entering into the study. So, the surface water, as I mentioned, we found how much of this is going in. And what needs to be done is to find the rest of this to determine a full lake restoration analysis for the twin lakes. So, what's next? We have a public outreach effort that is being presented at Twin Lakes Elementary School at 6:30 on the 28th of June. Public education outreach, best management practices. We've been reaching out to area jurisdictions to find out what programs for BMPs for source control of nutrients have they found effective? And what did they find not so effective? And we have been putting together a public outreach for that. We've engaged the city of Tacoma. You may have remembered that JC 2 was the highest phosphorus loading of, highest phosphorus concentration, sorry, it's different than loading, into the creek. And we've engaged the city of Tacoma water quality staff to see if there's any options in what can be done to reduce that pollutant load into Upper Joe's Creek. We engaged King County Department. We have engaged, but have not yet met with King County Department of Health to investigate the possibility of leaking on-site septics within the Joe's Creek watershed. We're providing ongoing technical support for surface water issues, not only to the twin lakes, but to all the lake communities within Federal Way. And we will continue our illicit control, source control and illicit discharge investigations, not only within Joe's Creek, but within Lakota, Cold Creek, and Redondo Creek as well. And then, we encourage the managers of Lake Lorraine and Lake, Lake Lorraine and Lake Gene to evaluate the other sources of phosphorus in order to have a lake analysis developed. So, this is the end of my presentation. I do have Rob Zizat here for any technical questions that are beyond my ability to answer.
Well, first of all, thank you very much, Teresa. Great job. And I want to say thank you very much to you and EJ and Marwan, our Public Works Director, for the meeting that we had yesterday, not only for this work, but also the meeting I had yesterday with Bob Woolley and Gary Darcy. Gary Darcy, the former president of the Twin Lakes Homeowners Association. And Bob Woolley, obviously, has an active interest in Lake Gene. So, there was an issue, maybe Rob, could we have Rob Zizat approach the podium as well, maybe simultaneously with, with Teresa? My understanding that there were, Rob, is it correct that my understanding is that you have been retained as an expert, not just for this report, but also the plaintiffs in the case that's, that's at court right now or before the bar right now about this issue between the Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club and the homeowners on Lake Gene? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, there was some concern that was expressed, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware of this, where it's concern expressed through Bob Woolley and Gary Darcy that the report didn't consider groundwater or some other factors. Are you aware of the concerns that have been raised with regard to the report and what it did and did not include?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And I, actually, I saw your sworn declaration that had to deal, that dealt with other sources of, of. Can you explain what those other concerns were that wasn't, what was not in the report and, and your thoughts on that?
Well, the report was about phosphorus getting into the lakes. My declaration was about how to deal with the, the consequence of that.
Okay.
And I suggested kind of what was recommended in the report to do an analysis of, of what most cost-effective techniques would be to manage the cycling of phosphorus within the lake itself, which they can control, which is what they wanted to do. I think it's about Lake Gene wanting to
Treat the lake.
End the toxicology of them so they can use the water.
Okay. So, the, the report didn't, to my understanding, the report did not include groundwater. Is that right? It included runoff, maybe just in regard to the school.
No, it, base, base flow in the creek is groundwater seeping into
Yeah.
the creek. So, we did look at the groundwater during base flow, getting into the creek and into the lakes and actually leaving one lake and into the other. So, we did measure that part. The, we didn't measure any direct groundwater into the lake. We didn't put any pessometers, or we didn't do the local groundwater in and out of the lake. We just measured groundwater via surface water conduits.
Okay, very good. Okay. All right. And that's really what Teresa, and Teresa and Rob, that was the, those are the parameters of the study, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, we, we may hear, and I think we are going to hear from Bob Woolley in a little bit later. And I didn't know if Gary Darcy, I haven't looked to see if he put some comments. But we may need you guys to come back and, and address this. I just want to front-load this, just in case we have comments. Thank you, Rob and Teresa. Thank you very much for your, for your questions. Counsel, are there any other questions? Councilmember Honda?
So, after this study, what are the next steps?
For the city, we'll be doing our illicit source control discharge and detection in Joe's Creek to see if there's been any illegal caps that have been into the creek. We'll investigate the onsite septic sources, try and reduce the phosphorus load that's coming in from the Tacoma area that we can. And then from the point of view of the lake themselves, that would be if the lake managers decided to pursue the treatment option or decided to pursue the balance of the phosphorus budget, we would definitely be able to staff that for them if they wish to provide the match and apply to Ecology for Grant.
Teresa, can you go over to the last slide?
Certainly.
Because I think there was a slide, the last slide, which was what's next.
I did it again. Slow down.
And we'll just leave that up so people can sort of absorb it, so to speak.
Let's see. There we go.
What's next?
What's next?
All right, counsel, any other questions? All right, oh, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mayor. You know, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm seeing dates other than the first point, which is public outreach will, will begin on June 28th. But, you know, reading this slide, what do you see the, the rest of the timeline? And I, I ask that just because I know that, I, I don't want to get in a situation where Lake Gene becomes toxic, and I want to make sure that we're ahead of that. So I'm kind of curious what your timeline looking like.
Okay. So the timeline that I presented here has to do just with the grant. And the grant ends, all of the money has to be expended or spent to the best of our abilities by June 30th. Past that, the efforts that we'll be doing are city efforts on our dime. And the public education outreach, we'll have a follow-up meeting from the questions that are developed on the June 28th meeting. We left that TBD, not knowing what kind of questions or actions we'll be directed to take. If the lake managers wish to pursue any sort of algae control grant, usually that opens in August and closes in the first of October. So that would be past the treatment time for a proactive treatment that has been suggested by some of the residents.
Very good. And that's why Yarden is going to speak next about the status of litigation. Any other questions on this? Councilmember Honda?
There's the Lake Summit, I believe it's called. It's a boys, it's on by a boy scout camp, and it has this algae in it. It's, people actually use that lake for drinking water. We haven't had warm weather. I, my understanding is that this is related to warm weather when, and the bloom gets, is that not true?
That is one of the elements. You can still, and there are currently lakes within the Northwest that are experiencing cyanobacteria blooms. We have been fortunate in that our lakes have not. But temperature is just one of the many factors that dictate the cyanobacteria blooms. So it is possible that there could be blooms during this cooler weather.
And that's down in
And that's hard to predict. The scientists are unable to really predict which lakes will and will not, and when they will have a bloom. I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean
Oh, no, it's okay. I, I was just going to say that that's down in Thurston County, and it's actually received quite a bit of attention on, on regional media. I keep seeing reports on King Five about Summit Lake because they
It's drinking water source, and they're having to look at isolating and trying to make drinking water safe for residents.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jim?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I
Councilmember Selsky, please.
Do have a question after looking this over. Thanks, Teresa. And I know our purpose here is to restrict the, you know, the phosphorus and nutrient flow into the lakes, I mean, and measure that as well. But I was looking at this letter from Gary Darcy, and with regard to algae control, he basically said that lake manager, there's a way to prevent hazardous algae blooms, which involves a timely and judicious applications of various combinations of herbicides, algicides, phosphorus inactivation, and also finely granulated iron. Now, does that effort still continue to this day to try to kill or, you know, reduce that during the year?
I do know Mr. Darcy mentioned that Lake Lorraine will be doing another treatment this year of the iron, zero valent iron. It is permitted under Ecology and is experimental at the moment. Most of the lakes in the Northwest are using an alum treatment, but then again, it depends on the type of lake and the depth of the lake and the, a lot of factors on how effective alum or aeration or the other treatments are. And it really requires a lot of analysis to evaluate which would be the best treatment.
Exactly. Because when I read some of these herbicides, algicides, phosphorus inactivation, and then iron, I was wondering if the, the cure isn't, or the prevention isn't almost as bad as the, as the problem. Some of these sound toxic.
You know, the jury is still out on what the long-term effects of our current treatment technologies are, how the impacts are going to be in the future.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember DuKlo.
I have a house out on a, on a lake in Ocean Shores, and we've had that problem too with that algae. It was brought in from someplace, and it can, it transfers from water to water very, very easily. You can have a little tiny piece on your boat, and it can infect a whole lake. And they, a couple of years ago, the city of Ocean Shores did put stuff in the lake, and the algae blooms died out. I couldn't even take my boat out without getting it caught in weeds and the motor choked up. That's how bad it was. And now they do it in, they don't do the whole lake anymore, but they will do certain segments of the lake that seem to be getting overrun with this algae again. And it does spread from lake to lake very, very simply. A bird can pick up a piece and drop it in another, in another lake, and the next thing you know, it's beginning to spawn and grow more algae in that lake. So, and it's crossed this country. I don't know where it came from, but it's been across the country now for years. So anything we can do to try and help keep control of that, as well as educating people on making sure that they're not helping spread it
That's right.
By, by things, is, is something that we can all do too.
Well, right now, there's a battle brewing between the, the, the golf club and the people that live in the lake. And so in regard to litigation, we've got Yarden Widenfeld, who was actually in court at the King County Superior Court last Friday. So thank you very much, Teresa. Great job, great work. So Yarden, why don't you come on up and just tell us just briefly what the status of that is? And then we're going to take Bob Woolley and Gary Darcy for your public comments now, since we're, we're all fresh with this information. We'll let you guys do your, your comments during this time. Oh, great, thank you very much.
Mayor Farrell, members of city council, when starting with the city last December 5th, 2016, the very first issue that Mayor Farrell asked me to look at was Lake Gene, which has been talked about, the second lake in the Twin Lakes Homeowners Association downstream from Lake Lorraine along Joe's Creek. My object from, my assignment from Mayor Farrell was to help the mayor and yourselves, members of city council, determine what, if any, role the city could play in helping resolve certain disagreements that have been alluded to, that had developed between the lakeside homeowners, particularly in Lake Gene, and the Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club. Part of that project, not the exclusive part, but part of it, and to some extent, I, to some extent felt that, that advice on exactly what could be done was, to a certain extent, dependent upon what, not completely, but to some extent dependent on what would happen ultimately with a lawsuit that was, that was filed. Now, several of the litigants are here today and may have their own comments on this, but I'm just going to explain what, you know, my investigation has, has yielded on this. So I've been following this lawsuit. It was nine, later actually eight, one withdrew. Lake Gene homeowners that filed suit against the golf club on March 30th of 16, about a year and a quarter ago. Their allegation originally was that the golf club had a duty to homeowners to treat Lake Gene for blue-green algae and alleged lake toxicity. Initially, several of the golf club's motions for summary judgment were granted, meaning that the homeowner's claims were dismissed. Later, however, the plaintiff homeowners amended their complaint requesting a declaration from the Superior Court, a declaratory judgment, as it's called, that the Lake Gene homeowners have a right under their easement of use and enjoyment to treat Lake Gene for blue-green algae and the alleged toxicity themselves. The State Department of Ecology was then added as a defendant. Both parties filed motions for summary judgment on that, meaning immediate dismissal without a trial, to be heard last Friday, June 16th. And I, I did attend that, as the mayor said, the June 16th hearing. After about 15 minutes, the hearing was recessed so that the parties could talk amongst themselves about settlement. Obviously, I was not a party to those conversations, but, and can only report on what was on the public record. Court reconvened about an hour and a quarter later for another six or seven minutes. And like I said, I was not privy to what was said in negotiations between the attorneys or what was said between the attorneys and their clients. But based on what was on the public record, it appears that a framework for a resolution has been reached whereby an agreed declaration from the Superior Court would be entered that the Lake Gene homeowners do have a general right under their easement of use and enjoyment to treat Lake Gene for blue-green algae and alleged toxicity with the normal requirement of following all Department of Ecology protocols and procedures. The Department of Ecology would then follow its normal process of soliciting input from any other interested parties as to the particular treatment sought, which goes to Councilmember Selsky's point about potential issues with a particular treatment. And ultimately, Department of Ecology would still be free to permit or forbid particular treatments pursuant to the normal criteria. The only declaratory judgment that is being worked on would state that, as a matter of standing, the homeowners have a right to apply for this, a, a permit to be able to apply the treatments. From what I understand, the details are still being worked out. The court did set somewhat reluctantly a new hearing for July 21st if there is not a resolution. However, parties seem to indicate on the record that they are likely to be prepared to enter an agreed order declaratory judgment with that, that declaration before the July 21st date.
Okay. Any questions of Yarden? Okay, which means essentially it's in the works, but it looks like at this stage, the, the homeowners have the right, or at least the preliminary indications are, the court is going to rule that they have the right to treat the lake, details to follow.
Correct.
All right, all right. We'll keep an eye on that. Just wanted to let everybody know where everything stood. And, all right, there we go. All right, and now let's hear from, Bob, you want Gary to go first? All right, Gary Darcy, and then Bob Woolley. They, they have, they have submitted pink sheets, and I add as, as a courtesy to them since they've already submitted pink sheets, and since this is a timely, it makes more sense to take these comments now. So let's go, three minutes.
Three minutes? Perfect. I had a, kind of a presentation prepared. I thought I was going first before Teresa got up and stole my thunder, and then you stole some of my thunder.
Oh, man.
So, what I'd planned on doing is just kind of going through, and some of this I've already given you. We got the report, I gave you a, a commentary to the results, I gave you my view of how the world spins out there. But anyway, just a little bit more to amplify on that. I bought my house in May of 2008, right on the shores of Lake Lorraine, and it was a beautiful lake. It was just amazing, and I couldn't believe I was that lucky to be able to live there. That lasted until about August, and the lake turned a, you know what? It was awful. And I, then I said, what the heck did I get myself into? So for the first couple of years, I did a lot of remodeling, and I just would watch the seasons kind of come and go. And in 2010, instead of continuing to complain, I said, I'm going to get involved. So I started with the HOA, and we started treatments. We had a, had a contractor that advised the homeowners association what to do. 2012, he came up with a product. It was a phosphorus inactivation product, kind of a prevention instead of a reaction. It wasn't, it was going to be an experiment. It wasn't like alum like you hear now that they use. It was called PhosLock. But it was just kind of the same basic principle. You dump the stuff in the lake, it filters down through the water column, grabs the phosphorus, locks it up to the bottom. That was the theory. And we were told that most of your phosphorus is coming out of the sediments. That's the bottom of the lake. So you put this stuff in, problem solved. You should be good for five years. The HOA spent close to $40,000 on two years' worth of treatments. 2012, 2013, the lake was perfect. No algae, nothing, no weeds, anything. 2014, thinking we've got five more years, guess what? The blue-green algae's back. That's when we knew that we were having a problem with Joe's Creek, because there was really nothing else. Yeah, we had some geese, we probably had a few homeowners putting fertilizer in, and guys washing their cars and their driveways that ended up in the lake. We knew all that. But we started sampling. I bought a sampling kit, we started investigating, got working with Dan Smith of the city, and Will Appleton and Marwan, and then the grant came along, the idea of the grant. And, and
Ed, one more, Ed, one minute.
And, and we were happy that, hey, we're going to go figure out what's going on in Joe's Creek, and we're going to, we're going to find the source, and hopefully, we're going to do something about it, or we're going to be told, you know what? There's nothing you can do about it. Okay? So you can imagine my disappointment when, you know, I, I read the report, I even listened to Teresa's because she talks about surface water and storm water and groundwater. It doesn't matter to me. It's water. Water entering the lake is loaded with nutrients, regardless of what you call it. So anyway, the other thing in the presentation, you know, you kind of glossed over the impact of soluble reactive phosphorus. That was the one that was higher than the limit. That's the thing that's kicking our butt out there. So anyway, and then the other, the other point I was going to make is, a few days ago, I got this statement, the one that you talked about, from the limbologist. Did I pronounce that right?
Yeah.
And basically, it said, "Lake Lorraine," and I'll read word for word, "Lake Lorraine and Lake Gene will continue to experience toxic algae growth over the years unless action is taken. Unfortunately, there is currently no feasible way to stop the flow of phosphorus into the lakes." Okay? I get that. I agree with that. I mean, I'm not a limbologist, but I've sampled enough, it's coming, and you're not going to stop it. Give me another second. This thing went on to say, suggests that we treat with alum, even though other documentation says if you have this external loading like you do, don't, alum will be ineffective. It says it in a couple of documents. Anyway, this paper goes on to say that the treat, the lake can be treated for a mere $100,000 every five years. Now, is that reasonable for homeowners to pay $100,000 to keep their lake safe when we are not putting the phosphorus in it? Sometimes I, I use an analogy, and I'll be done, and then I'll go back and sit on my seat. Just imagine if I were to go and rent myself a dump truck, go out to Farmer John's, get a load of horse manure, and come over to one of your houses, then dump it in the driveway and drive off. Would you be happy just to go out and pay to clean it up? That's the way we feel. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Gary. Great job. I want to, you know, rules are important. I let Gary go a little bit over time because Gary was the president of the Twin Lakes Homeowners Association with, you know, representing thousands of peoples. And so I wanted to make sure that, that he had the time to finish his thought, and it is a little complicated. Bob Woolley, you're up, sir.
Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, council, citizens, my name is Bob Woolley. I'm a Twin Lakes resident. I'm a Lake Gene resident. I've been here for the last 17 months. I don't want to be here much longer, Mr. Mayor. Ardon articulated his capability by giving you a recitation of where the litigations are. He didn't comment on mine. I'm not going to bother you with the second litigation. But his example is the indication of how thorough he is in addressing this Lake Gene problem. He has written a report. He is in his seventh month. We are simply waiting for his report. Mr. Mayor, when will we see the report? When will the city council see the report? Gary, I just saved two minutes. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. I came up here with six guns, I've left them hoisted. We're not giving you two barrels worth.
All right.
When can we see the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Very reasonable request. Yarden is up to 60 pages, 60 pages plus. We're in the final stages of editing, and we'll We're in the final stages of editing, and we'll get that report out as soon as possible. So, it's thorough, let's just put it that way. There is an executive summary, thank goodness. And so, he's going to put the finishing touches on it, and then we'll get it out, wide and far.
One more, ten seconds. Mr. Mayor, I got a brand-new blue-and-white shirt for Father's Day. I'm saving it for whenever that report comes out.
All right. Bob, I will personally deliver it to your house. We'll take care of that, all right? All right, sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, now let's move on. Thank you, everybody. So let's move on to Mayor's Emerging Issues Report. So, we've got the 24th Annual Red, White, and Blues Festival, July 4th, at Celebration Park. Parks Director John Hutton.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of City Council. I just want to invite the entire public out to our 24th Annual, as the mayor mentioned, Red, White, and Blues Festival at Celebration Park on July 4th. The event starts at 4:00. It is free admission into the park. Great fireworks show, as Deputy Chief Steve Neal mentioned. Great activities for the entire family. We have food vendors, lots and lots of fun to be had by the entire family. We have a killer lineup of entertainment. Starts out with a mariachi band, kind of a salute to some of our ethnic groups in the area. We also have a Hawaiian dance and music band. We have the Randy Oxford Band, which are regionally just tremendous blues band. We've had them before, about five years ago, you may remember a wild man playing a trombone 80 yards from the stage. He's wirelessly mic'd up, and he's phenomenal. That band, it just rocks the house. We'll have the Disco Balls, backed by popular demand. Spike and the Impalers are our headliner, they are tremendous, very, very famous. They got a couple legitimate, legitimate rock stars in there, including Lyns...
I played the cowbell a few years ago, so...
I was speaking about people with musical ability. Sorry, you threw me that one down the middle, sir.
I gotta have my cowbell.
You got better as...
How'd the cow feel about that?
And we have our tremendous emcee, Alex Zerby, back, who's been on TV on five continents, really, really fun. He really engages the crowd well. We have tremendous food vendors, some of the ones you've seen before, and a couple of new ones, so we're excited about that. Want to get a shout-out to a couple, a few people or a few organizations that are tremendously helpful with this, starting with the Federal Way Police Department. Without them, there's no way we could do something like this. It's an all-hands-on-deck event, and the police are central to our success, and we really appreciate them. Also, South King Fire and Rescue play a tremendous role. They man an aid station for us and help us with lost kids, and if anybody gets a minor owie, they take care of them right there. They do a great job with the kids. Both organizations do a great job with little kids, giving out badges and all kinds of fun stuff. The Arts Commission, Waste Management, Fore Culture, and Red Canoe, along with the Federal Way Mirror are all returning, hugely important sponsors for us. Usually, the entire City Council is there, along with the mayor, and it is a great event. Crowd estimates, over the last several years, have been in excess of 20,000. Last year's estimate was about 23,000 people. So, that's an amazing thing, when we have a quarter of our population in one park for an event. So it's a tremendously popular event, it's a fun event, it's a safe event, and as Deputy Chief Steve Neal mentioned, it's a great way to enjoy fireworks safely. And we started this when we outlawed fireworks in the city 24 years ago, and it's been wildly successful and growing every year, so happy to answer any questions for any of you.
Please stay for the fireworks. John and I have been working hard on the soundtrack that the fireworks are going to go off to, so it's going to be a great show.
It will be a great show.
Okay, any questions? All right.
See you there.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, fireworks at 10:15?
Yes, sir.
All right, 10:15. All right, so now we've got Ray Gross, our Emergency Manager, to talk about the Greater Federal Way IEMC training in Emmitsburg, Maryland, coming up here in late August. Ray?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members, members of the audience. I'm Ray Gross, the Emergency Manager for the city, and I'm going to be talking to you tonight about the community-specific Integrated Emergency Management Course. What this is, is a course offered by FEMA through the Emergency Management Institute. They offer about 11 or 12 of these courses per year. It's a competitive process, so every state, counties, cities, all compete for this, and for us to win a spot is a pretty high achievement. Not only that, we've won it twice. We've gone back in 2009, they tested our preparedness and response plans, we came back with flying colors on that, and it just emphasizes the essential role of government is to keep its communities safe. And that's what we proved back then, and we plan to prove it again this year. So when is it? It is the August 27th through September 1st, so it's a week-long course. Two days are kind of logistics, checking in, checking out, but then it's four days of intensive instruction and testing and validating of our plans. Where is it? It's in the National Emergency Training Center, Emmitsburg, Maryland. Who's going? And this kind of demonstrates the commitment of our, what we call our Greater Federal Way Emergency Management Program. We have 70 people going back from the City of Federal Way, City of Des Moines, Federal Way Public Schools, Lake Haven Water Sewer District, St. Francis Hospital, South King Fire and Rescue, and we have volunteers going from our Federal Way Community Emergency Response Team and the Federal Way Amateur Radio Club. So, and we have staff from the whole spectrum that would play a part in emergency management.
And I'll be attending as well.
Absolutely. So, those people going back, we've kind of broken them up into a policy group, which consists of elected officials from all of those organizations, as well as senior management. We'll have the Emergency Operation Group, who are the decision-makers and managers of the various organizations that would be represented. The ELC is kind of where directions and priorities are established. And then the new thing that we're going to be testing out is our Recovery Task Force, and so once life-saving measures have kind of concluded, we transition into recovery, and that's where the real work of getting things back to normal starts to happen. The cost of all this, FEMA provides the lodging, it's very much like a university, so they have dormitories there. The Greater Federal Way Emergency Management Program is picking up the meals, it's about $9,000. We have joint funds, so those organizations that I listed all contribute to the program about $7,000 a year, and we're pulling out of those joint funds to pay for the meals. And then FEMA will reimburse the individuals their travel expenses. So, how this works, what happens there, like I said, it's about four days of intensive instruction. FEMA will bring in subject matter experts to provide classroom instruction to the people we send back there. It'll be anything from all-hazard planning, social media and public information during disasters, resource management, mass care, debris management. So we'll get a good, in-depth, up-to-date, most current techniques out there. We'll get a good dose of that. And then, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of that week, FEMA will put us through our paces in the afternoons, going through three different types of tabletop exercises. One will be transitioning from response to recovery, another one will be short-term recovery, and then long-term recovery. The nice thing about it, why we want to do this, FEMA does not pull punches. They have no problem, if your organization is not fulfilling their task, FEMA will send them home early. Okay? Just to give you an idea, we became aware that we've won an application early last year, and for the last year and four or five months, all those organizations have been meeting typically about twice a month, putting an effort into this. So being sent home early is a pretty significant event. We don't intend to have that happen to us, and FEMA will not pull punches, so we come out of this, we will have our plans validated. But in emergency management, the most valuable thing we can have is relationships that are built amongst those organizations and the people in those organizations. We've seen that in real life, 2014, when we had the apartment fire that displaced 91 people. South King Fire responded, Federal Way Police responded, Federal Way Parks responded, set up a shelter, it all transitioned very smoothly. We managed to take care of those 91 displaced people and got them back on their feet. During the landslide at Dash Point Road, we needed a place to put all that mud and debris, vegetative debris. Lake Haven Water Sewer District stepped up and allowed us a temporary location to manage that. And then that business fire, you know, Public Works, Surface Water, once they got involved, well, they knew who to talk to, because they had been going through this training, so they immediately knew who to go to and talk to them about, you know, various aspects of the impact of that fire. So that's some of the value that this type of training brings home to us, and it's fulfilling one of that key roles of local government, which is keeping our community safe. And that concludes my presentation, I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
All right. Counsel, any questions? All right, thank you, Ray.
You're very welcome.
We'll give a report, and we'll do a report when we come back.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we had the Neighborhood Connection Meeting last, on the 14th, Wednesday. It was a great, it was at Decatur High School, great opportunity. Thank you for everybody who came out, and thank you to the staff who were there to answer questions. It was such a town hall meeting, it was very productive. This morning, here at the City of Federal Way, at City Hall, we had the Federal Way University Initiative Meeting here, and we had representatives from the school district, from Highline, University of Washington Tacoma, and my office, working in tandem about really two different pathways. One is offerings, which kind of classes are going to be offered, and on the second portion of it, where they will be offered. So those efforts are ongoing, and those meetings are ongoing. Okay, report on community events. We had the ribbon-cutting ceremony for KBS Washington on June 9th. We had the Flag Day Celebration on June 10th, which is a great opportunity, a great event. We had the Cogent Federal Way Data Center grand opening last Thursday. We had the Home &amp; Home ribbon-cutting on June 16th, Friday, and that was Teletron as well. I am told, you know, this is the old, what's that building? Top Foods, thank you. This is the old Top Foods building. Listen to this, it's amazing. That former Top Foods location, when they put in Home &amp; Home and also Teletron, over a three-day weekend, they nearly sold a million dollars' worth of merchandise. That is a tremendous investment in our community, it was great. In fact, when we arrived there, and we were there for that grand opening, they were almost lined up out the door, the line, just so, that's a great investment, you know, by this dual use in this building. Okay, then we had the Performing Arts and Events Center press conference in this very room, and Teresa, why don't you show them, we talked about, we had Teresa Yvonne, and we had a full room, talking about the inaugural season of our Performing Arts and Events Center, which is on time and on budget. Teresa, go ahead and talk.
So, very quickly, I wanted to show you a little sneak peek of the inside of the facility, and invite all of you to come to the ribbon-cutting, and there's also brochures over here, so if you want to see all the performances that are coming this next season, please pick up a brochure, help yourself. What happened?
Very good. Okay, so join us Saturday, August 19th, 11:00 a.m., we'll be there for the ribbon-cutting, and it should be a great event. Do we have the governor coming, did you say?
We just heard earlier that he might not be able to make it, but we're trying to work with his schedule.
Very good, okay. So we'll have lots of folks there. Okay, so, thank you very much, Teresa, and we're really excited about that opening season, and so I'm sure people can read about the press conference that occurred earlier in this room. We've got the Miles from Esso 5K Walk Run on July 4th, starts, I believe, at about 9:00 a.m. Report on regional community meetings, we had a Chamber of Commerce quarterly meeting last Wednesday morning, Puget Sound Regional Committee meeting on 6/22. We have the Korean Quarterly Update on June 22nd, that's this Thursday, and I've got an SCA, Sound Cities Association Board Meeting, 6/28, next Wednesday or Thursday, and then a SCORE, the Regional Jail Meeting, on that same day. All right, now, let's get on to the most important part of the evening, which is public comment. I've got, first person is Lynn Long.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, and Deputy Mayor Burbage, and Council members. My name is Lynn Long, and I am representing Friends of Camp Kilworth. I have lived in the Federal Way area for almost 50 years. I have seen many of our historic landmarks fall into disrepair, and the land around them developed. Tonight, I am asking Mayor Farrell and the Federal Way City Council members to pass a Historic Preservation Ordinance. I value Federal Way's historical, cultural, and heritage sites, and I believe we need to preserve them for years to come. As we grow as a city, places like Camp Kilworth, which turned 81-years-old this year, and the Warehouser Campus, will become a valuable asset to our communities. Preservation is a must to ensure that future generations have a place to enjoy. Thanks for your time. I know all of you received the historical CD of Camp Kilworth, and also the photos of the camp. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lynn. All right, Deborah Hansen, then Dana Holloway.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and Community, my name is Deborah Hansen. I'm a long-term resident of Federal Way and a member of the Save Warehouser Campus Group. Over the past 30 years, I've observed many changes in our community. Years ago, I participated, along with many business leaders in our community, in a focus group to define the downtown Federal Way. It's exciting for me to see what Teresa just presented, the Town Center with the Town Square Park, the Performing Arts and Events Center, the Transit Center, and the possible addition of a new hotel site. I believe there is a need for a balance between our natural world and our developed world. Our society is consumed with adrenaline-induced water parks, computer games, and passive video entertainment. As you continue to move forward on the development of our downtown area, I hope you, as a council, will remember that our children also need the balance between development and experience with nature. Nothing beats up-close and personal experience with nature at large, instead of simply reading about it in a textbook or seeing it in a video. The 50-plus acres we are trying to obtain as a conservancy area will be ideal for our children to experience native plants, habitats, and a natural shoreline. Today, while touring and exposing Peter Von Reichbauer's Legislative Aid to the conservancy area, a coyote loped through the meadow in the front of the Green Line Building. It was exciting for me, and I think we need to keep this environment for our children and grandchildren to experience. I want my grandchildren to inherit a city that is not only vibrant with a I want my grandchildren to inherit a city that is not only vibrant with the downtown, but still has pristine wilderness and shoreline. As a representative of the Save Warehouser Campus Group, I want to express our appreciation to, I'm sorry, she's not here, Teresa Thurlow and E.J. Walsh on Marwan's staff for all the work they did to get the request for the million-dollar grant from King County Conservation's Future Tax Levy Collections toward the purchase of the Northlake Conservation Property. We were notified by Yarden Wiedfeld this week that the Northlake Conservation Property has been recommended as second priority of 17 recommendations. We know this is not a done deal and feel positive about being a high priority on the list of recommendations. I ask the council to continue to keep in mind the balance between development and conserving, preserving, and maintaining the natural aspects of our community. Your actions or inactions make a difference in what our children, grandchildren, and future generations inherit, and what Fedaway becomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Could I just take a moment to, because we've had the Police Department here, and we've had the Fire Department here, to thank them, we have had campfires on the west shore of Northlake, and the Fire Department has responded within minutes, the Police Department has been out there, and Code Compliance has been out there cleaning up bags of garbage and blue tarps, looked like a campsite was set up, but the city has really responded, so I just appreciate all of that.
Thanks, Deborah. Thank you. Okay, Dana Holloway, and then we've got Tashawna Nash, and then Mark Green.
Good evening. I have two items tonight. The first one is short. I support and encourage the City Council to pass the Agenda 8A for the protection and preservation of landmarks tonight. The second item has to do with Sound Transit 3. The following is from the Fedaway Link Extension Record of Decision dated March 9th of this year, and it's like a paragraph. Light rail will enter Fedaway from I-5, where it crosses over South 317th Street, and terminates at the elevated Fedaway Transit Center Station located on the west side of the 23rd Avenue South, and stops north of South 320th Street. Elevated tail tracks from the station platform will extend over South 320th Street. The only information and diagrams I've seen from Sound Transit that they've presented to the City Council meetings always stops at the elevated City Transit Center Station. I haven't seen anything that goes beyond there, and we, of course, they have to go over 320th. I am concerned that the elevated light rail tracks, what the elevated light rail tracks will look like, that must cross the span across 320th South, and the impression that it will present of the city. I am unaware of any other light rail transit center or light rail tracks that are being built across a main entryway to any other city. I would like to know the city's plan on how this elevated light rail track is going to be built across 320th, so it isn't an ugly gray concrete eyesore at the main entrance to the city welcoming everybody who comes to Fedaway's downtown, because I've seen most of them, and usually they're just gray tracks. So hopefully, there's something with the staff and Sound Transit where we know it's going to be there, but that it's not going to be an eyesore, it's going to be beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Dana, actually, before we go on to the other one, have you been up and seen right around where International Boulevard and 200th intersect, and seen where the light rail comes essentially right over that area?
Angle Lake.
Angle, yeah. So if you get off the freeway at 200th, and you know how it loops around, and then it eventually comes back, and you just head like you're going through the water?
Okay.
Eventually, you're going to get to 99 or International Boulevard. That's really what it's going to look like, because you've got, and you'll have that idea. We've actually, for quite a long time, had conversations about either a pedestrian bridge or something that's going to span 320th. There were a lot of conversations. One of the first things I did when I became mayor was meet with architects to talk about some sort of spanning 320th, because now it's about eight columns, a car width across, or car lanes. So let's, maybe what you can do is, I'm going to have Marwan get with you and talk with you about, and maybe show you some pictures of where this happens, because I think, actually, when I've thought about this and looked at this, I think it's going to be a very positive amendment for the city.
Can you see the picture?
Sure, you bet. You bet. Why don't we have Yarden, not Yarden, Marwan, can you please maybe inquire with folks here who may want to see some of that, and send them some schematics and maybe some pictures of Sound Transit?
Will do, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Marwan. All right. Thank you very much. And it's a great comment, because, you know, our downtown is literally changing before our very eyes. With the Town Square Park and the PAC, and now ST3, people are not, in the hotel that's going to go in beside the PAC, people are not going to recognize our downtown in a very short period of time. So anyway, Tashawna, please.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell and City Council. My name is Tashawna Nash, and my husband Darren and I are 14-year residents of Fedaway. We are excited to hear that the Northlake Shoreline property has been recommended as second-in-priority by the Citizens Committee for the King County Conservation Futures Grant of $1 million. We understand that if awarded this fall, it would match the $1 million in surface water funds already committed by the City of Fedaway. We appreciate Forterra's involvement and work with IRG to determine the value of the approximately 54 acres to be saved. We are eager to work with Forterra, the city, county, state, and citizens to raise the funds needed to protect this unique property. This land is located to the west of Northlake, and is the longest stretch of undeveloped freshwater shoreline in Fedaway. There is easy access to well-developed trails, public access, and a boat launch for fishing, and a riparian forest with trees that are over 50-years-old. The property is home to 115 bird species, including the bald eagle, purplefinch, willow flycatcher, and trumpeter swans. Other wildlife include river otters, native frogs, salamanders, and turtles, along with the Douglas squirrel, that is not normally found in cities because they prefer dense coniferous forests. Northlake and its 486-acre watershed is at the headwaters of the East Hylabos, and contributes significant water downstream to the Hylabos Waterway and the Puget Sound. The healthy water quality is attributed to the undeveloped forested shoreline. Thank you for your work so far in helping to secure this one-of-a-kind property for Fedaway citizens. We must continue to work together so that it may be enjoyed by our residents and visitors from the Pacific Northwest and beyond for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Tashawna. Okay, Mark Green, and then Mary Ellis.
A lot of Fedawayans don't know this about me, but I am the former, two-time Democratic nominee for Congress from the state of Alaska for the years 2000 and 2002. Alaskans appreciate it, my knowledge of history, and my steadfast willingness to stand up for we, the common people. However, to the dismay of myself and many others, the Saywat, McGinn, Murray, and Jayapal-inspired radical left have taken over the Democratic Party in Washington State, and whose tentacles now reach Fedaway City Hall. I saw the signs years ago when I moved to Washington in 2002, and that is why I formed the Revive Citizens Party, which was inspired by the environmentally conscious and common people-oriented Citizens Party of the 1970s and 80s. Some of you may remember Barry Commoner. By the way, for anybody who thinks that Fedaway elections are fair, unfortunately, I have some inconvenient truths. The major publication in our city decided that they were only going to publish the press releases of two of three candidates for mayor, and their political columnist regularly writes as though the primary was already decided. Unfortunately, he didn't learn his lesson from doing the same thing in regards to the primary of 2015. In Fedaway, candidates cannot even get a speaking slot on the Fedaway cable channel, unless they come here, of course. Even leftist Seattle gives all candidates an opportunity to speak on their cable channel. Give democracy a chance in Fedaway. Thank you.
Mary Ellis, and then Suzanne Vargo.
Evening. I am here in support of the Historic Preservation Plan. I was very involved in the Centennial Committee, and that's one of our major goals coming out of Centennial, and that was the state centennial, was to form a historical society that showcased what we actually had in this community. Unfortunately, the running joke was that Fedaway had no history beyond its name because the freeway came through. So I think the Historical Society's done a good job proving that we do have history, and now it's time to, I hopefully, preserve the properties that still showcase that, including Camp Kilworth. 1936 was, the Rotary Lodge was built, and we'll never see it like again, not with the timbers and all there, as well as the property around it. It's a very unique site, the high-bank forest there, Warehouser Building, an award-winning building, and many other sites that have been identified. So I just thank you, and hope to see you after these years, actually preserve these pieces of property, or at least put in the preservation plan so we have an opportunity to preserve these properties, as well as the other ones the Historical Society and your staff have identified. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Suzanne Vargo, and then Julie Cleary.
Hi, Mayor, Council, friends. A couple of quick things. I live in unincorporated Fedaway, and it is a true war zone on 4th of July, the 2nd of July, the 3rd of July, and onwards. If, I know everybody's probably gone from the police and the fire, but if we could get the word out that maybe they could flow in our direction too, that would be really great over by Enchanted Village. Sweet. Also, could we get possibly a deer crossing on Warehouser Way South? They have been spotted, and they are now crossing over the overpass, kind of tricky. A lot of people don't realize, we have a lot of deer and wildlife in our area, so that would be a great thing, just have a deer crossing, keep it in our mind. Okay, for the last 10 months, we've been talking and asking the city to acknowledge the east branch of the Hylabos. You know I had to do it. But truly, there's been 26-years of information that has been documented on the importance of the Hylabos and the ways in which it could be preserved. The executive proposed basin plan from 1991, 26-years, nothing has been done. I cannot figure out why, after all this time of me talking, no mention of preservation is ever brought up during our meetings. Why are we not creating stewardship for the Hylabos, even though many of us have asked for it? We have heard nothing from the city. Doesn't cost very much, and we would definitely put in the effort that needs to be done. I literally have talked until I am blue in the face about protecting our watershed. But perhaps the answer lies in light rail. It seems that they want to stake claim in unincorporated King County Fedaway. First, a transfer station behind Costco and the Home Depot, and secondly, a light rail station needs to be, light rail needs to have a maintenance facility somewhere in the south end. The first site would be on the other side of Highway 18, off of 28th Avenue South, by World Vision, across from Lake Colarni. This land was deemed undevelopable, was actually even offered to be sold, but nobody can develop the land because it's a protected waterway. Building a maintenance facility amongst residents, our aquifer protecting our watershed, pardon me, our aquifer wetlands tributary connectivity in what has always been a protected watershed is unthinkable. Our earliest settlers made this home in this area. It has historical value and environmental influences. The second option is behind the Gethsemane Cemetery along Highway 99. I cannot believe somebody had the gall to entertain the idea of putting an industrial entity so close to our sacred places. The tribal cemetery is St. George's Cemetery. It is located right in this area. The Spring Valley School releases their salmon fingerlings here as well. And as we elect to protect our historical places, are we really going to allow destruction of the places that were our very earliest beginnings? The land where Gethsemane Cemetery is located was the land of Peter Hylabos. He was the Commissioner of Indian Affairs, and it was he who brought the nuns of St. Francis to the St. George's Indian School. It is he that our watershed and so many places in Fedaway are named after him. It is the Hylabos Creek where the Spring Valley, oh, I already said that, sorry. To think that, even for a moment, light rail would be screaming through a cemetery? Our aquifer, our so-called protected watershed on the west side? It's absolutely unthinkable. So I will ask again and again for the city to stand up to the big corporations and to Sound Transit. Stop giving in to their harebrained schemes of light rail. Start being more transparent with all of us. I really don't feel like I should have to research from two-years ago, four-years ago, to find out what's going to happen in our future. We really need to be informed as residents. You cannot conveniently put highly polluted facilities in a residential neighborhood or protected waterways.
Ms. Vargo.
You know, everybody else gets to talk and stand up and do. I have two more sentences. Could I get that out?
Sure.
Thank you so much. The facility is to be placed in an area zoned for heavily industrial equipment. Clearly, neither of these places are meant for transit. I ask the city to reject any such talk of maintenance facilities at either of these places. You cannot deem the Warehouser Campus an industrial zone, nor can you deem residential areas or cemeteries that should be protected. Just because we are in unincorporated Fedaway does not mean that we are unimportant. Please start taking care of the portions that have been neglected for so long. Thank you so much.
All right. Julie Cleary, and that's the last pink sheet that I have.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been a few months since I've stepped up to speak to you, and I've since moved to Edgewood, so, but what Suzanne talked about tonight is some information that I came across this week, and I commute on 28th Avenue South, and I remember so many people coming up here and talking that they can't even get out of their driveways. And so the number-one preferred site is the old Fedaway Dump, and, jeez, my husband remembered going there as a kid with his father. And so, these are from 2016, the summer, and it shows where they, oh, okay, what's going to say to you? I forgot. I was going to say, Mayor Farrell, you are right. So I came to you in January, and that's when I did these records requests, so it took me this long to get these from Sound Transit, and I was afraid that the Warehouser was going to be the light rail maintenance, the OMF, Operation Maintenance South. And so, no, it's not going to be there, so you were right. You were very adamant about that. It is in the circled preferred zone area here. These are the four sites. In 2015, Fife was chosen, which is an industrial zone. It's a great place for it to be down there, you know? That would work really good. The site that Suzanne talked about, I believe, is too slopy. They're not going to go with that. I'm not sure why they didn't like the gravel pits in Milton. That one's also zone residential, though. Isn't that weird? Gravel pits, kind of odd. And then the King County Dump, the old Fedaway Dump that everyone remembers if they were around here back then. That's still zone residential also, so that's going to have to change. And these are kind of important because these are part of Fedaway's PAA area, so is that something that Fedaway City wants to have, a giant track rail system? It's quite extensive. The one- The one in Boeing Field is about 20 acres. This will be about 30, and it will hold 108 rail cars in the preferred site with guideways or tracks coming across I-5 over behind Costco and Home Depot. On this one, it looks like they'd like part of Home Depot's parking lot to put in the parking garage. I think it was going to be about 400 stalls. And I can send you any of these if you haven't seen them. So they, was that my end one? Oh, good. So I think, I've skipped all my notes. They did just put out a study because they want to see, they want to make sure that what they're asking for now is what they really are going to need in the future. So, because they might even have self-driving rail cars at one time, they want to know if they'll, maybe they can both work together? Do they really need one this big? I'm hoping that you guys, if you don't know this information, that you will put a stop to having a gigantic industrial rail yard. And, I mean, this is butts right up against apartments and homes, people's homes. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Great information. Or we'll talk about that tomorrow. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have a public comment? All right. Oh, please, come on up.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Flanagan with the Rainier Audubon Society and working in coalition with the Say Warehouse or Campus. And tonight, I'd also like to speak in support of the Historic Preservation Ordinance that you have coming tonight. As the city matures, more important historical places like Camp Kilworth, as the other woman had mentioned, Ms. Long, that we're going to need more protection, preservation, and enhancement. However, none may be as significant as the 430-acre regional gem known and loved for the past half century as the Warehouse or Headquarters Campus. For the city to have as its cornerstone a building and campus bestowed with accolades that place it shoulder to shoulder with Frank Lloyd Wright's Guggenheim and the John Hancock Center is simply amazing. And to have a 430-acre landscape design created by Peter Walker, whose most recent work is the 9/11 Memorial in New York City, is jaw-dropping. That currently, there is nothing in place that prevents the nationally significant historical place from being altered, to me, is gutting. So we need a Historical Preservation Ordinance that protects our history, shapes our community, and helps grow our economy. It's not just the locals of Federal Way who recognize the need to protect this historical jewel. King County Council, State House, and Senate Representatives recognize the regional historical importance of this place. And most recently, as you all heard at last city council meeting, the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation has identified the former Warehouse or Campus as its 2017 Most Endangered Historical Place in Washington State. Not just the building, but the entire 430-acre campus. And as its Preservation Services Coordinator Jennifer Morton aptly states of the campus, "Due to its exceptional historic and architectural significance, particular care must be taken with any new development. New buildings must be sensitive to the original design philosophy of the campus, which emphasize integration with the landscape and environmental sensitivity." Having a Historical Preservation Ordinance in Federal Way's revised codes is a right step towards preserving, protecting, and enhancing our historical gems like the Warehouse or Campus. I hope you will support passing this ordinance and help give the council, the city, and its people a stronger voice to protect and preserve our historical landmarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy. All right. Thank you. All right, now, moving on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee, have three council members, and have been forwarded on to council for full consideration. So I'll ask, I'll go ahead and read the items, and then I'll ask council members if they would want an individual item pulled for separate consideration. All right. 5A, minutes for the June 3, 2017 Regular and Special Meeting Minutes. Item B, Steel Lake Park to Downtown Trail Project Bid Award. Item C, 2017 Surface Water Management Capital Improvement Program, CIP update. Submittal of Transportation Grant Application. Item E, Ballistic Vest Partnership BVP Grant. Item F, Amendment Number One to the Washington Traffic Safety Commission, WTSC, Target Zero Team, TZT, inter-agency funding. Council, are there any items the council would want to pull for separate consideration? Hearing then, Deputy Mayor Burridge, you have a motion?
I do. I move approval of items A through F on the consent agenda. Second?
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter passes unanimously. Item Six, Public Hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Item A is Resolution 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Plan. First, we'll have a staff report from Rick Perez, a city traffic engineer. Then we'll open it up for citizen comment and council discussion action.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. Good evening, council members. So we have before us the 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Plan. Policy question before the council is, should the council authorize staff to proceed with the adoption of the 2018-2023 City of Federal Way Transportation Improvement Plan and Arterial Street Improvement Plan? So the TIP, as we refer to it, outlines a six-year plan for transportation-related capital projects. We update this annually. It is required to maintain eligibility for grant funding, must be financially constrained in that at least the first three years has to have a reasonable chance of being funded, must conform to air quality requirements, and is adopted after the public hearing. There was some alterations to the prioritization criteria that the council approved earlier this year. We eliminated concurrency as a scoring criteria and added a safety-related criterion related to the number of collisions, in addition to collision rates and collision severity. So, and then we also came up with criteria to score non-motorized projects to put them on equal footing with roadway capacity projects. So the impacts of those revised prioritization criteria are that resulted in the removal, suggested removal, of several concurrency-driven projects. And secondly, non-motorized projects did rank similarly to the capacity projects, as was intended. The highest-ranking projects typically are addressing all three: safety, capacity, and non-motorized needs. One thing I've noted is that the rankings are not necessarily consistent with criteria for grant funding programs, so we may be tweaking those in the future to make sure that our highest-ranking projects are the ones that are most likely to get grant funding. So there's an overview of the projects. The green ones are non-motorized improvements. We have two federally-funded overlay projects in addition to the citywide overlay that is not shown. And the orange, or, sorry, purple segments, actually, are roadway improvements, the red dots intersections. So in 2016, we completed projects at 304th and 28th, 1st Avenue and South 328th Street. We had two federally-funded street preservation projects on 288th between Military Road and I-5, and on 324th from Highway 99 to 322nd Street, and some signal modifications at Pete Von Reich Barrow Way South at South 316th Street in support of the Performing Arts and Events Center. I mentioned concurrency projects being taken off the list, and there were, this is the list of those. 10th Avenue and Campus Drive, 344th Extension between 12th and 21st, 99 at 312th, 2nd northbound left turn lane there. Highway 161 and 356th, there was a 2nd northbound left turn lane that was being proposed there that will actually be constructed by WashDOT as part of the next phase of the Triangle Project as a roundabout intersection. The roundabout at Warehouse Way and 344th. We had a couple of projects that we had proposed contingent upon grant funding. 8th Avenue South sidewalk from 312th to 315th, that did not get grant funding. Similarly, 314th from 20th to 23rd, and 336th from 99 to 20th, and 26th Avenue Southwest, that was Olympic View Safe Routes to School Project, that did not, was contingent on grant funding, that did not happen. One project that's being modified, we had a long-capacity project widening 336 Way and 340th Street from 26th Place Southwest, which is there, all the way to the county line. As such a large project would be difficult to get funded all at once, and so we are proposing to split that into three phases. And the first phase that we're looking at possibly applying for grant funding this fall would be on 340th from about 37th Avenue Southwest to the county line. And then the second phase would be through the 35th Avenue Southwest intersection, basically from 31st to 37th. The third one, because we're talking about projects that will probably take about three years to deliver, did not end up on the six-year TIP, but that will be coming up once we get this project number five funded. Another new project we're proposing is at Military Road and South Star Lake Road, adding a right turn lane from Star Lake Road, so, and also adding some sidewalk connectivity in that area. Another one, this one had 1st Avenue South and Southwest 301st Street, a compact roundabout at that location to address an emerging safety issue there. And as I mentioned, we're looking at a couple of federal overlay projects. One is 16th Avenue South from Highway 99 down to SR18, and that will be contingent on obtaining that grant. Similarly, Campus Drive from 1st Avenue South to 19th Avenue Southwest. And that one's probably the more promising one of the two. And then finally, a trail project, and this would extend on the west of Highway 99, a little bit down the hill, from 288th Street down, tying into Redondo Way just north of Dash Point Road. There's a sewer eastman through there, and so starting a connection to create a parallel path to Highway 99 for the bicyclists that are a little too intimidated to be riding on Highway 99, which I can completely understand. So the city's long-range plan is to provide a parallel facility to Highway 99 throughout the city. On a related note, we had a, a couple of years ago, we completed the Twin Lakes Greenway project, and so we are proposing a project that would implement that system citywide. This is a way of providing, again, parallel routes throughout the city for bicyclists and pedestrians to avoid the busy arterials, but still reach major destinations throughout the city. And finally, we are moving forward with a project to retrofit all the city-owned streetlights and also PSE-owned streetlights that are in public right-of-way to LED fixtures. That will cut our power bill on that, about, probably about $200,000 a year when the thing's all done, so. So there were a couple additional questions that were posed by Chair Selsky on Land Use Transportation Committee about city center access and 47th Avenue Southwest at 320th Project. And I think we addressed those at land use, but I can go into those if need be. So altogether, options considered is Option 1, to recommend approval of the resolution adopting the 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Plan and Arterial Street Improvement Plan as presented at the June 20 public hearing, or Option 2, do not recommend approval of the draft document and provide direction to staff. Mayor's recommendation is to approve the resolution adopting the 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Plan and Arterial Street Improvement Plan as presented. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Selsky.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Farrell, and thanks, Rick, for the presentation and for juggling the myriad of projects that you're doing, trying to improve our city and the traffic flow and safety. Just a couple things. First of all, project date here is the Phase 5 of the State Route 99 project. Right now, there's, you know, there's construction going on, and it's impeding traffic a little bit, but can you kind of walk us through how long we have to go yet with that project and what we can expect going forward, just so the people who drive through there kind of know what's coming?
So the first phase is undergrounding the utilities, and that's frustrating for a lot of folks because it doesn't appear that there's any real progress. But it is, in fact, occurring. My recollection, and Marwan can correct me if need be, but we're about two months away from shifting the traffic over, and then the other side of the street will be constructed, then flip it back to the newly-constructed traffic, or the new traffic lanes, and then construct the other side. And then there'll be one last shift where the middle, the medians, are constructed. So I think the tentative, we're looking at August of 2018 for complete project, project Anything to add to that, Marwan?
No, that's correct. What we are hoping to see, that as Rick have indicated, we have three phases of the project, which shift in traffic to one side to allow the contractor a safe working zone on the opposite side. We are anticipating that we are not going to be able to pave this year. The weather was not helpful for us this winter and spring. We are anticipating that most likely the paving will be early next year, and after the paving, you do the striping and the planting. So we are hoping that the project will be completed between June and August of 2018.
Okay, great. Thank you. So about a year or a little bit more than a year? Okay. Secondly, the, I'm kind of intrigued by the citywide Greenway plan. Is that a candidate for federal funding, grant funding, or any other grant funding at a different level?
Probably not. I mean, we'll certainly be looking at those opportunities as we always do. But right now, I think the best chance we would have had was, there was a Complete Streets Initiative from the Transportation Improvement Board, and apparently, we didn't rank that well. They're looking for complete street ordinance that actually has council responsible for any deviations from constructing a street that addresses all modes, which we tried to do anyway, but apparently, our policy language was a little too wimpy from their perspective, so. So we did not rank very highly on that, unfortunately. But the fact that we have an ordinance still puts us ahead of most agencies in the state.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Hunda.
Thank you. Can you explain why 10th Avenue Southwest, it's Southwest Campus Drive, was removed?
So in the rankings, right now, there's not, there's a little bit of a level of service issue there, and we were anticipating volumes would increase more quickly. That's the reason it got put on when it was, and we funded design for that. But the volumes have not been materializing as fast as we thought they would, and there hasn't been a safety issue out there that has risen to any significant level, so that's the reason it's dropping right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Rick. Stay close. Is there anybody who would like to comment from the citizen about, from the folks? I was going to say, councilmember, Dianne Noble-Gulifer, would you please come on up? I was going to say, councilmember, Diana Noble Gulliford, would you please come on up?
My name is Diana Noble Gulliford. I had a question, and that was the policy question in the beginning. Concurrent change versus the safety and the priorities of the projects? And I was just wondering what, why that policy is changing? And if that has anything to do with measuring concurrency when new development comes to Federal Way? Especially concerned about, of course, the impact, traffic impact of sound transit, but also new developments over in West Campus, intersection of Highway Ninety-nine and Three Twentieth, but also Three Fifty-six as it goes into Northeast Tacoma. People are using that road now to bypass the Fife Curve on I-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Rick, can you address that?
Yes. So, yeah, and for those who aren't familiar with the term concurrency relates to a requirement in the Growth Management Act that says, "We cannot permit development that would exceed the capacity that we designate is allowable to, in order to approve new development." So, Diana Noble Gulliford's question is on point. One of the reasons we chose to modify that criterion, or actually replace that criterion, is the fact that in the comprehensive plan update, we lowered our level of service standard. In other words, we're choosing to allow more congestion. Now, that was not an easy recommendation for me to make, and it wasn't, I think, probably an easy recommendation for a lot of people to accept. But the rationale for it is simply that we could spend literally billions of dollars providing adequate capacity on our street system and have nothing to show for it because the more capacity, our modeling suggested, all the capacity we were adding was basically diverting traffic from the freeway system. And so, we're going to be looking at it from a perspective of addressing the most critical capacity issues only. And there will be some that nobody's going to like the response. If we want to, say, fix the congestion at Three Forty-eighth and Enchanted Parkway even after the Triangle Project is constructed, after light rail is constructed, it's going to be incredibly expensive to do that. And does it make sense for us to continue putting money towards that when it ends up resulting in larger and larger intersections, larger and larger roadways that are less pedestrian and bicycle friendly? And does that foster the type of development that the city wants to see? So, given all that, we are allowing, instead of development only going up to capacity of an intersection, we're allowing up to 20% overcapacity. So, it's, you know, that's, and the way that gets measured, I mean, we can get technical on that, but the bottom line is, if, what we were looking at, if we didn't lower our level of service standard is, Three Twentieth would be eight lanes between I-five and Highway Ninety-nine. Parts of Ninety-nine would have to go to eight lanes. Instead of double F-turn lanes, there'd be places that had more triple F-turn lanes. And so, the intersections just get bigger and bigger. When you make the intersections bigger, the signal cycles get longer and longer because you have to increase the time for the pedestrians to cross it. And so, you're chasing your tail in a lot of different ways and spending a lot of money, and all you're doing is letting washed out off the hook in providing adequate capacity on the freeway system. So, that's, that was the struggle. I probably beat that one to death, but.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other citizen comment? All right, now, we'll turn on, turn our attention to council discussion, or council discussion or action. Council? All right, councilmember Moore.
Yeah, I actually just have a question for Rick, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
So, just for my sake and understanding, I heard you say 20% is the number you're using. Why is that? Help me understand that.
Well, first off, and even with that 20%, there's still going to be improved, capacity-related improvements that need to happen, okay? We're not just saying, "We give up." But 20% would be, when I looked at different thresholds of how much money we would have to spend and what it actually accomplished, it seemed like there was kind of a breakpoint there. That's number one. Number two is, in intersection capacity calculations, once you get past a volume-capacity ratio of 1.2, i.e. 20% overcapacity, you cannot calculate the delay. There's no equation that is statistically stable to generate that number. And so, I can't say to you, "Yes, we will keep delay under two minutes when you approach this intersection," or whatever number. I have no idea what it would be. So, so those two factors is what led to that policy recommendation that was adopted in the comprehensive plan.
Interesting. Councilmember Handa.
Thank you. So, when it gets to 20% or higher, is, do you know if there are any studies that indicate that people will run more red lights because they're frustrated at sitting at intersections?
Actually, that starts kicking in when you get overcapacity. So, and that's why we put emphasis on the safety aspects, is that recognizing that you're going to start seeing, you know, certain types of collisions increase at signalized intersections and unsignalized intersections. Actually, I should mention, unsignalized intersections, we left it at capacity. It was only signalized intersections we're allowing 20% over. And it was precisely because of that issue. At an unsignalized intersection, there's no mitigation other than you either signalize it or put in a roundabout or add more lanes. So, you're doing some type of capacity improvement at an unsignalized intersection when it reaches capacity, and probably before that, it's going to meet signal warrants or something else is going to start happening. You're going to see the collision rates increase. So, anyway, I'm kind of digressing a little bit. But the bottom line is, if we have that severe of an issue, you're going to see it in the safety numbers. And so, then it will start prioritizing based on that instead of pure roadway capacity.
So, on the intersection of Three Twentieth and Ninety-nine?
Yes.
With Chick-fil-A coming in? Currently, that's the difficult intersection, anyway. So, what do you anticipate with that intersection?
So, right now, it is, that intersection is actually operating under capacity. And in part, that's because people are getting held up getting off the freeway, okay? So, with Chick-fil-A, yeah, certainly for the first year or two, you're going to have some queuing issues. We, you know, we haven't worked out with them as to how they're going to manage their traffic onsite and try and keep the queue from backing up onto Highway Ninety-nine. So, I can't, I can assure you, we'll be working with them on that to minimize the impacts. I don't know what that's going to look like yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, councilmembers, any other questions? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the hearing by Councilmember Selsky?
Yes, I move to close the public hearing for the 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Plan.
Second.
Motion, a second. Is there any discussion regarding closing the public hearing? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That are passed unanimously. Now to the main motion. Councilmember Selsky.
I move approval of the 2018 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Plan and Arterial Street Improvement Plan Resolution.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, to move the forward to approve the TIP as set forth. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Main motion passes unanimously. Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. Item B, the First Amendment to the 2016 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan versus a staff report from Jeff Watson, our Human Services Manager. Then we'll put up a citizen comment, and then we'll go from there.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is the First Amendment to the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Policy question is, should the City Council approve the First Amendment to the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan? The amendment involves the addition of a project, that project being the Dawn Domestic Violence Shelter renovation project. This project was recommended for funding. They made an application in 2015 for the 2016 funding year, and the Human Services Commission actually approved the project that was submitted in August of 2015. In 2016, the annual action plan was approved by the City Council. However, the Dawn project was mistakenly omitted from the annual action plan. Nonetheless, staff made an error, and we began to negotiate a contract for the project with Dawn. And we determined that an error had been made about a month and a half ago. So, we initiated the amendment process to the annual action plan. That amendment process is based on the city's citizen participation plan, and it's characterized as a substantial amendment because we are adding a new project into the annual action plan. The, excuse me. The amendment process includes a public comment period that was opened on May nineteenth and closes today. The Human Services Commission recommended approval of the amendment on May twenty-second. The council committee forwarded the amendment to council last week. No comments were received during the comment period. The original request was for $25,000 for a bathroom and potentially work on the fence around the, around the project. What happened is, in the meantime, there was an emergency situation with the bathroom, and damage was caused. That was corrected, and changes were made to the bathroom by insurance. That left Dawn coming back to us and saying, "Gee, can we just make the project into a fence project and a security gate?" So, the original request was for $25,000. The current request is for $60,000. I want to put this, this application and this project request into a little bit of context. There were questions about the funding on the part of members of the council committee, as well as Councilmember Selsky had questions separately from that. And those questions revolved around whether this project would perhaps be taking money away from other projects that might be funded, and the simple answer is no. What I want to do real quickly is note that in addition to our 2016 grant or our 2017 grant, we have funding from previous years that is yet to be spent. The amount that we have from previous years is a little over $1 million. So, when you add it to the grant for 2017, we're looking at about 1 point, almost 1.7 million dollars. One of the things that is of interest on the part of some of the council members is just a reminder of how our annual grant is split up and how it is used. 20% of our annual grant goes to planning and admin. A maximum of 15% goes to public services, which are similar to the Human Services General Fund grants that we provide. And the remaining 65% goes for capital projects and economic development. The number that you see here for capital projects, $931,000 is certainly more than 65% of a $675,000 grant. And that reflects the allocation of previous year's dollars to projects that have been approved. What that's going to leave us with for 2018, in addition to the grant that we will receive, is a little over $500,000 in prior year grants. Just real quickly, again, for 2017, the annual grant, about $275,000. These are the projects that have been approved and will be, will be funded include, and does include the Dawn Shelter renovation for $60,000 in this total of $931,000. Also, to give you just a visual of this, the 20% for planning and admin, the public services, and the capital projects, the service projects at 65%. This is based on the 2017 allocation. It's representative of the way that the money is spent every year. One of the things that we also thought was important to share with the council is how things are going to look going forward with regard to how money will get spent. The, what we're showing on here is the addition of the debt service for the Performing Arts and Events Center, which will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 a year. That will be a part of the capital. That's 65%. So, that will come out of that, and it leaves about $240,000 for other capital projects. What that might look like going forward into the future would be if, if we were to continue to fund projects that the city operates, including code compliance and our housing repair program. Basically, that is what we'll have funding for as we go forward. And it includes a need to, based on the 2017 funding, it would include a need to reduce the funding for those two projects by about $12,000. The project impact for the Dawn Shelter, this is a critical service for Federal Way residents. There's no domestic violence shelter in Federal Way. The Dawn Shelter is in Kent. It supports a vital need in Federal Way. And as you can see, over to 2014 through 2016, nearly 100 residents for Federal Way have been served by the shelter and provided over 4,000 bed nights in a safe place for those who are subjected to domestic violence. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Sefadoss, and then Councilmember Selsky.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Dawn's request was, did it request 60,000 or 25,000?
The original request was for $25,000. With the, with the emergency that happened in their bathroom, that was actually a primary part of the original request. Again, that was the funding for that, and the repairs came from their insurance. So, they came back to us and said, "Gee, can we change this to just be about the fence?" And what happened is, we were working with them on a contract and going through the bidding process, is the costs of construction have gone up over the last couple of years. And in going through the bid process, the, what was the lowest, we thought responsive bid was actually substantially less than $60,000. But we found that that contractor had a number of issues with labor and industries that could not be resolved. And so, we were left with a second bidder that, that led to the cost being higher and getting up to that $60,000 figure. So, that's why the, the request has gone up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Selsky.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Farrell. And thanks, Jeff. Thanks for adding the pie charts. I think they help understand a little bit better what the allocations are and really where we're going with the program. I know they helped me a lot, so thanks for adding those to the presentation. Just a question, a couple of questions. On the table that talks about expected resources, there's four different resources. There's CDBG, program income, the city general fund, and then the Section 108 loan. On the program income, there's, there's no income listed. And I may be dated on this, but we used to have the, I believe in the housing repair program, we had income paid back by those that were given the funding. Is that no longer applicable?
No, that is in fact applicable. However, we've had very little program income come back from that. We expect that that will pick up, if you will, as we go along, but we've had But we've had so little activity in that regard, we simply haven't added Program Income in because we're just so unsure of what that amount might be.
Yeah, okay. So are we still publicizing this as potential for homeowners to go out, you know, or to request?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yes.
So we're putting our effort forth, or just we're just not getting much application for that?
No, I, forgive me. When I say that the Program Income is not coming in, what I mean by that is the program is set up so that homeowners are provided a loan. It's a non-performing loan that is due on change of title or perhaps the death of the homeowner, something like that. So it could be, you know, it could be five years. It could be 25 years before they're in a position where they have to repay that loan. So we just don't, you know, we just don't know that yet. And so because we've had so little in return of repayments, we're just not including any Program Income because we just don't know when it's going to be coming back in. That's not necessarily a reflection of activity in the program itself.
Okay, okay, good. I'm glad to know the funds are going to good use, at least in that portion of it. And then the second one is, it's actually on page 12. We're providing $175,000 in homeowner. So this is for providing decent, affordable housing. And in here, it says two household, two household housing units. Can you talk a little bit more about that for $175,000 on that piece of the total?
Well, that is the, are you referring to the city's housing repair program or?
Yeah, it says goal number two is provide decent, affordable housing.
Pardon me?
Yeah, homeowner, yeah, homeowner housing added two household housing units. Affordable housing preservation.
That particular number is an error. There are more housing. It is the city's housing program, the housing repair program. I apologize and will correct that. But the number two housing units, that number is way too low. But it is about the city's home repair program. And it's more likely to be in the somewhere between eight and 12 homeowners that we would help per year.
Got it, okay, okay, good. Thank you for explaining that, that's all.
Councilmember Hunda?
Thank you. Have you heard anything more about the future of CDBG?
Not really. You know, the Congress passed an omnibus spending bill in early May. So we know what our funding amount is going to be this year. We haven't actually been formally notified, although the numbers have been released by HUD. We just simply haven't received the formal notification from them. The next step in terms of going forward is what is Congress going to do for the 2018 and future fiscal years? The administration continues to want to eliminate CDBG and home and other related programs that are a part of HUD. Again, those programs are very popular around the country. They're very popular and supported by both senators and members of the House of Representatives. So I don't expect that the programs are going to go away. In terms of might they be reduced, hard to say at this point in time. And I think we won't have any idea about that for several months now, so.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, any other questions? All right, Jeff, thank you very much, great job. All right, now, moving on, are there any public comments or citizen comments about this issue? Okay, hearing none, council discussion or action? Councilmember Copeng? Oh, okay, just getting ready for the vote, I see you. All right, anybody else? All right, Councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion?
I do. I move to close the public hearing for the 2017 Program Year Community Development Block Grant Action.
Second.
Annual Action Plan.
Second.
Very good, there's been a motion and a second preemptively. And is there any, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now closed. Now on to the main motion, Councilmember Copeng.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the First Amendment to the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passed unanimously. Item seven, council business, Sound Transit City Services Agreement. First of all, a staff report from E.J. Walsh, our Public Works Deputy Director, and then we'll move forward. E.J.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on Sound Transit related to the City Services Agreement. This was presented to LUTC at their last meeting, and it was asked that it go to the business agenda, so we are here. So the policy question before council is, should City Council authorize execution of an interlocal agreement with Sound Transit to allow for reimbursement for incurred costs associated with the Federal Way Link Extension Project? Just for clarification, since I've heard comments on both projects tonight, the Federal Way Link Extension Project is extending it from Angle Lake to the station at 320th, and that is the end of this project. There is a second plant project that is just starting the planning that is with Sound Transit to extend it from the 320th Station to essentially the Tacoma Dome. This is not that, this is just 320th North. So the overall background is, Sound Transit completed the Environmental Impact Statement or the EIS for the Federal Way Link Extension. Funding of the project was approved by ballot measure. And with those two, funding the design process is being, sorry, I misspoke. With those two, the design process is being advanced. I will point out that this is being done as a design-build contract. And what that means is that they are going out, Sound Transit is putting this on the street to potential responsive teams through a qualification process to get a design-build contract. What that means is the successful bidder will be responsible for the final design. So that process will not start until 2018, the design portion of it. So we will not have renderings of specific areas or renderings of the project or a final design for that matter until late 2018 or early 2019. That's part of the mechanism that Sound Transit took to the ballot measures and was approved by the voters. So the city's input on specific items will occur at that point with the final design. So the overall schedule, I just talked about this a little bit, but 2017, they're working on the preliminary design. And this is a conceptual, this is where stuff goes layout type of a thing. This is, you know, properties the track goes through, but this is not the track design. Late 2017, a design-build package will be let. Late 2018, the successful bidder will be responsible for the final design. That's that process I just talked about. And then 2019 is the start of construction. And the target that Sound Transit is focusing on is 2023 is the start of service to the Federal Way Station. So the City Services Agreement, this was prepared jointly by Sound Transit and the city. It was established as the framework for an interlocal agreement to allow Sound Transit to reimburse the city for expenses due to plan review, permitting, inspection, and approval for the Sound Transit 3 extension to Federal Way. So the City Services Agreement covers the entire life cycle of the project. So some of these things that I just said are not happening yet, like permitting, inspection, and approval. The City Service Agreement puts the mechanism in place to allow Sound Transit to reimburse for city expended efforts over the course of the project. So some of this is future work. City labor is reimbursed on an hourly basis. And the important part of this is it's in accordance with the currently adopted fee schedule at the time of the occurrence. So what that means in plain English is that if the fee schedule that the city adopts, the council adopts, changes in 2018 or 19, the city labor that's expended, plan review time, will be billed at the rate that, in the calendar year that it's occurred. So we are not locking ourselves to the 2017 fee schedule through 2023. Expenses are based on an incurred cost. So task orders are kind of the breakdown, they're a step down below the City Services Agreement. And a task order provides a specific scope of work, outlines specific responsibilities, and has a timeframe for completion. So Task Order 1, which is the second part of what we're here for tonight, is to provide funding for coordination, communication, management, administration, review of plans and agreements, and this will be those preliminary documents. Review of station access right-of-way improvements through the end of 2017. This is limited to 2017. A future task order will cover review and coordination beyond that time. The other contemplated future task orders, and this is just basically the laundry list from Sound Transit, it's not set in stone, would be formal review of final design, station access, land surplus, any sort of joint partnership projects if we elect to pursue that, permitting and inspection. So I covered a lot of what the City Service Agreements is. And just for the sake of clarity, I want to cover what it is not as well. It is not the development agreement. So at some point down the road, Sound Transit will be back in front of council with staff to present a developers' agreement. And that covers negotiated terms, that covers specific items related to the project as opposed to this, which is purely a reimbursement agreement. It does not cover impacts or offsets from construction. Those are things that are contemplated in the EIS. It does not cover TOD development, it doesn't cover any sort of requirements or restrictions. All of that is future development agreement items. So the options considered are to approve the interlocal agreement with Sound Transit to allow for reimbursement for incurred costs associated with the Federal Way Link Extension Project and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, or not approve the interlocal agreement with Sound Transit and provide direction to staff. I will, one final thing I will point out, that this is retroactive back to January 31st for incurred time, which is the date that the EIS was issued by FHA. So the mayor's recommendation is option one. The LUTC motion from June 5th was to forward option one to the council's business agenda. And with that, I am available for questions.
All right, before we do that, we're coming up on 10:00 PM. Deputy Mayor Burbidge, do you have a motion?
I do. I move to extend tonight's meeting past 10:00 PM.
Second.
It's been motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Drat.
I'll second that, no. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And I meant the deputy mayor's motion, not Councilmember DuKlo. All right, just to make sure the record's clear, all right. So we had the report, Councilmember Selsky, do you have a motion?
I do. I move approval of the interlocal agreement with Sound Transit to reimburse the city for costs associated with the Federal Way Link Extension Project and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Do we have discussion?
We can after the motion. There's been a motion, is there a second? All right, now, is there any discussion?
Well, I have a couple of questions here. First of all, I want to correct something. It was passed by the voters, it was not passed by Federal Way voters, however. There's a lot of questions here. One of my questions, as being Chair of the Finance Committee and looking at our budgets and everything for coming up, I know that they are going to relocate some of the businesses that are going to be displaced from where they are. And some of them may stay in town, some of them may not. Is there any plan for some kind of recompensation to the city for loss of revenue?
That would be part of the development agreement.
Okay, let's make that a suggestion, that it be strongly in the development agreement. We should not lose out because of what they're doing.
Okay, and I think Aday has prepared a separate study memo for council that, at least at a high level with the information we have today, addresses some of that. But those sort of specific items related to impacts, related to the project, are covered within the EIS that Sound Transit did. But then specific asks like that for that conversation would be part of the development agreement, conversation down the road.
I strongly urge the mayor and whoever else is working on this, that has to be a strong component in this thing because that could severely impact our ability to take care of our citizens. You know, we have a police force, we have a lot of issues going on, and we can't stand a cut in business income into the city.
Now imagine if we had gone with what Sound Transit originally wanted to do,
Well, yeah, I know.
Which was to take light rail and put it all the way down Pac Highway and cut our city in half and chew up $80 million worth of road improvements over the course of past 14 years. It would have been really horrible, and the displacement of not only residents but businesses. So that didn't happen, but, so I, thank you very much. It's a point well taken, and we'll pursue that. All right, counsel, any other comments? Councilmember Hunda?
I certainly agree with Councilmember DuKlo. We're going to lose about 300 jobs, according to Aday. And some of those won't be able to relocate in Federal Way because you can't find space in Federal Way. So it's going to be a great loss to our city. My question is, when, and maybe you don't know this, but when the work actually starts, will they work at both ends and meet in the middle? Or do they start at one end and come down or go up?
Sure, so nobody knows that answer yet. That is one of the criteria that will be required to be declared as part of the design bid SOQ process or Statement Qualifications process. So each of the design teams is free to propose as they see the best fit for the project needs are. And then that'll be part of the discussion with the qualifications within Sound Transit at some point in late this year, 2018. So there is not an answer to that yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Sefadoss?
Yeah, so this is reimbursement-based, it sounds like?
Yes.
So do we have the money to be reimbursed and what are we anticipating to spend?
So Task Order 1, the budget for that is $300,000 for basically 2017. Like I said, it's an incurred cost. So that is a number from Sound Transit, just based on the number of hours that staff's been working on it year-to-date that they forward projected for the remainder of the year. But the incurred cost is what gets reimbursed. So if it's less than that or more than that, that's, you know, they pay on an hourly basis essentially.
So why don't they pay directly? Or what? I just want to understand.
I mean, they do reimburse the city directly. So the way the City Services Agreement is set up, either monthly or quarterly, the city essentially sends them an invoice with a summary of the hours, and then they cut a check within 30 days. So, and we have to incur the hours, show them the hours to be incurred, and then they reimburse us. But they are paying the city direct.
So this is the city's portion of our work, staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're not paying for Sound, I guess I'll be clear, we're not paying Sound Transit to do design work. And we're not paying their consultants. This is purely for the city's review of and our portion of this.
Thank you.
Essentially, the impact of our,
That was my, okay, thank you.
The impact of our departments and the amount of time and labor that they're incurring.
Correct, and it covers all the departments. It's like, I'm here as Public Works, but it covers community development, police, parks, everybody that incurs time associated with it.
I misunderstood that portion of it, so thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Hunda?
Thank you. So I have a question on what you just said. Maybe 18 months ago, I asked a question of the mayor and of staff of how much we had incurred, what costs we had incurred for going after new market tax credits. And Brian Wilson was one who responded to my question and said that, as a city, we didn't keep track of staff's time on projects. So therefore, he couldn't answer that question, except for the travel costs. But you're saying that you are keeping time. So is that a new thing that the city's doing, or is that something that?
Based on the, based on the conversation in January, we are keeping track of it. It's being done jointly with finance through the, basically the timesheet system, that it's being coded as a separate line. Because we knew this was coming, yes, it is being tracked independently. That has not historically been done within the city, though. But enabled to be able to be reimbursed, we knew this was something that we had to do. And, you know, like I said a minute ago, all of the city's time is eligible. So finance's time for their portion of that is eligible as well. But you are correct, historically, this has not been done for city projects.
So it's going to be done for all city projects?
I do not know that answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, Councilmember Selsky?
We already had the motion.
Oh, that's right, that's right, there's been a motion and a second, and we are at the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passed unanimously. All right, now moving on to Item B, thank you, E.J. 2017-18 Right-of-Way Landscape Maintenance Contract Bid Award Staff Report, Desiree Winkler, our Public Works Deputy Director.
Always a lot taller than me. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Just pointed that out. I am here for the 2017-2018 Right-of-Way Landscape Maintenance Services Bid Award. The policy question is, should council award the 2017-2018 The policy question is, should council award the 2017-2018 Right-of-Way Landscape Maintenance Contract to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder? The current landscape contractor, SMS, or Superior Maintenance Solutions LLC, terminated their contract effective June 12th, 2017. We rebid the project prior to that, opened them on June 7th, where we had three bidders. The parent low bidder was Mackmore Incorporated, over a 12-month period bid is $264,610. Our available annual budget is a little over $283,000. Just to put that in perspective, our last contractor that did the same scope of work, included landscaping, litter pickup, garbage and recycle pickup, was Osaka in 2016, for a little over $244,000. We know Mackmore, we've sat down, we've talked with them, and they have actually been the subcontractor to SMS for the past four to six weeks now, and we've really been evaluating their work and their ability to perform. They have been bringing the resources that have been needed to actually do the work, and we are satisfied with their level of service, and they know they've got some catch-up to do, but they're ready and they're able to do it. So what we, we propose to do is award this contract to get us through 2018, that was declared as part of the bid. So for the rest of this year, July through the end of December, it's $136,545. Then for next year, January through December of 2018, it's $264,610, for a total award of $401,155. And the available budget for that year and a half through 2017, 2018 is $430,000. So the options considered is to award the 2017-2018 Right-of-Way Landscape Maintenance Contract to Mackmore Inc., the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, and the amount of $401,155, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Option two would be to reject all of the bids for the 2017-2018 Right-of-Way Landscape Maintenance Contract, and direct staff to rebid the project and return to committee and council for further action. The mayor recommends approving option one, and I am happy to answer any questions.
All right, Councilmember Wosowski?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Farrell. Thank you, Desiree, for the presentation. So it sounds like the subcontractor's been working past month and a half or two months in lieu of the main contractor?
Yeah, the, the model of the former contractor, SMS, is that they don't actually self-perform the work. They actually act as a kind of a general contractor, and they find landscape contractors as subcontractors. And they had, had an original contractor the beginning of the year, that didn't work out very well, they have been trying to get another contractor in, and struggling, but they managed to get one in the last four weeks at the end of the contract. And this is Mackmore, and we've been pleased with how they've been doing work and are confident that they understand what's needed, since they've been doing it, and are, look forward to working with them.
Good, it sounds like we, in effect, eliminated the middleman here, I mean, for, for a better With the original con, what was the original contract amount? In other words, the new bid that we received for the next 18 months, is it larger than what we had originally?
With SMS?
Right, with SMS.
Yeah, the SMS, for a 12-month contract, the bid was about $156,000.
Okay. Okay, so really, in effect, we're better off. Potentially, we're better off financially and performance-wise.
It's within our budget, and I think that they will perform well.
Mm-hmm, good, okay, thank you.
All right, council, any other questions? All right, Councilmember Wosowski?
I move to award the 2017 to 2018 Right-of-Way Landscape Maintenance Contract to Mackmore Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute the contract and other related documents.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously, thank you, Desiree. All right, ordinance is first reading, Council Bill 726, adding new chapter 19.285 to Federal Way Revised Code for Historic Preservation. First, we'll have a staff report from Dave Vandewey, Senior Planner, then the City Clerk will read the ordinance title. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'm proud to present an ordinance to protect and preserve the city's historic landmarks. The Planning Commission's 2016 Work Program calls for adoption of this ordinance and application for certified local government status, which is a state designation for local governments to qualify for certain grants and incentives. The first step to qualify for this program is to adopt a historic preservation ordinance, and there are five required sections. First, it must create a historic preservation commission. Next, it has to provide criteria to designate historic landmarks. Third, a process to nominate historic landmarks. Fourth, a process to review certificates of appropriateness, which are requests to make changes to historic landmarks. And finally, it provides a special tax valuation, which is an incentive to rehabilitate historic landmarks. The Planning Commission wrestled with the question of whether to create this program from scratch, create a whole new section in the city code, and create the city's own landmark commission, and the alternative was to partner with King County, who has an established program, and to use their experienced staff to review applications. They saw some efficiencies in partnering with King County. The city will avoid any upfront costs of hiring full-time preservation staff by doing so, and the thought is that eventually, if the city wants to establish our own preservation program separate from King County, we could do so after we're more established. So the way this program works, King County currently partners with 12 cities, they've each adopted the King County Preservation Ordinance by reference and signed interlocal agreements with King County. After doing so, they all qualify for the benefits of certified local government status instantly, so they qualify for all those grants from the state, as will Federal Way. And the way the, the program works is that application fees are paid to the city, which cover the cost for the county to review the applications per their experts. Then the county will bill the city quarterly, so there's no cost to the city for this program. There's no cost sharing between the participating cities, and as I said, there's no upfront payments required by the city. So per the King County ordinance to be adopted by reference, it provides the following landmark criteria. A property has to be at least 40 years old and associated with important events or persons, or embody characteristics of a type, period, or style, or yield important information in history, or be emblematic of the work of an important designer or builder. And the way the nomination process works is that first, an applicant has to provide written owner consent, so this program is entirely voluntary. The Planning Commission felt strongly that it should be a voluntary program, so your neighbor cannot nominate your home as a historic landmark, you would have to sign off on it. An application would be submitted to the city, and the LUTC had some concerns about the city not having enough input into this project. So they proposed that city staff would evaluate applications for conformity to the city's code. So we've updated the proposed ordinance to include that requirement, so if an application does not conform to the city's comp plan, it's denied automatically. If it does, which most of them will, they'll be forwarded to the county for evaluation. Next, a public notice is posted, this is a public hearing notice, and LUTC also thought it'd be a good idea to require notifications to all the neighbors of nominated property, so we've also added that requirement to the code. All properties within 300 feet of a nominated property will be notified. And the, the last step of the process is that a landmarks commission holds a public hearing. Now, in this partnership, the city would appoint, city council would appoint one member to King County's Landmark Commission. Hearings would be held in Federal Way. Once property is designated, there's no restriction on the sale of that property, nor are there any special restrictions in regards to setbacks on that property, or any sort of, you know, changes to the standard zoning requirements, nor would there be any restrictions on adjacent properties. So once a landmark is designated and an owner wants to make some changes to the property, they'd have to apply for a certificate of appropriateness, so they would submit an application to the city. We would then forward it to the county for evaluation, and their historic preservation planners, architects, archaeologists would take a look at it, and if it's a small change, it doesn't alter the appearance of the property, they could approve that administratively. If it's a bigger change, then they would make a recommendation to either approve or disapprove that application. Then a public notice, a public hearing notice would be issued, and the landmarks commission would convene in Federal Way and make a final decision. Now, for final decisions on either the COA or the landmark designation, those could be appealed, in which case it would go to the city's hearing examiner, so the city would have final say for both of those processes. And finally, the special tax valuation I mentioned, it subtracts the rehabilitation costs from the valuation of a property for tax purposes for a period of 10 years, and that, again, is just an incentive to promote rehabilitation of historic properties. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 17th, nine citizens spoke, all in support of the ordinance. Planning Commission recommended city council adoption of the text amendment. LUTC recommended to city council adoption with the two changes that I mentioned. First, city staff review of nominations for conformance with the comp plan, and secondly, that public notices be mailed to all neighboring properties of nominated properties. So the mayor recommends first reading tonight and adoption on July 5th.
All right, Councilmember Honda?
Thanks, and thank you very much. I'm very excited about this. When I, my first year on council, I requested that this was added to the Planning Commission work plan. I never anticipated it would take so long to get to council, so I'm really excited. And I'd like to thank the Historical Society for their never-ending work on saving our history, the members of the Planning Commission, and the city staff for working on this. I have a couple of questions. If the city nominates a building, do we have a process that we would go through to nominate a building or a space?
Since owner consent is required, the city could nominate a privately-owned property if the owner signed off on it, and then it would go through the same process that I just went through.
So if we wanted to nominate Brook Lake, we own Brook Lake? We could do that as a city?
Yes.
Okay, is it, and we just go through the same process as a citizen?
That's right.
Okay. To, to notify the surrounding neighbors, our staff will do that?
That will be finalized in the interlocal agreement, but we think it would be easiest if the city handled all the notifications.
Okay, and is there a time period in which we will do that, so that they have adequate time to respond?
Yes, per this ordinance, the notification has to go out 30 to 45 days before the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Moore, then Councilmember DuKlo?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Dave, for, for your report, and of course, a huge thanks goes out to the Planning Commission and their vetting process, and, and of course, the land use and transportation, and as well as the historical work. I know that I've talked to our former colleague, Diana Wogelford, on this plenty of times, and so appreciate her efforts and, and the Historical Society as well. So I have one specific question, and that's, and then another one that just kind of came up in my mind. So first, you know, Camp Killworth is obviously, I think, a very historical place, having viewed the footage and whatnot of 80, in fact, they had their 81st or 80th anniversary or something like that. So how would this fit into this preservation? That would be my question to you, and then there's a follow-up question.
Right, so if the owner of the property opted to apply for landmark designation, then they would submit an application to the city, and it would have to meet that criteria listed in the code, right?
Of events, important persons, embodies characteristics, that?
Right.
Okay. So it would essentially have to be kind of spelled out a little bit, as to how it fits those criterias?
It would, and King County's preservation staff is very skilled in evaluating these applications, and also doing their own research to uncover other historic information about property.
So this next question I have, and it may, I don't know, I'd be kind of curious to see what Ryan has to say with this question, but, you know, so obviously, we have to get the, the sign-off on the owner of the property, agreeing that this is historical, or, you know, with this paperwork. If they say no, but the city or the party really feels like this is really a historical pres, you know, is very historical, would there be any opportunity to add in this, saying that, I don't know, I guess it kind of had, that's kind of my legal question, I'm not finishing up my question, but I'm just wondering, at the, at the end of the day, can the city say, well, this is, this is historical, and King County Historical Preservation Commission would agree, and we want to preserve this? And the reason why I ask that, just to kind of clarify, and I apologize if it doesn't make sense, because it just came up in my mind, is we've got a lot of historical land here, and as a policymaker, speaking for myself, you know, it's important that we protect it. So, I don't know what.
Ryan?
I'm sorry, what is your question?
The question is, could it be non-voluntary by the landowner?
Not currently as drafted. If you would like us to explore that option for a future ordinance, we'd have to look into that, I can't answer that off the top of my head.
It would implicate, but perhaps, a taking?
It probably would be a taking, and that's the issue I'd have to research.
Which would, which would require compensation?
Correct.
By us, if we did that against the landowners?
Yes.
And it changed the value or the use of that property?
Correct, so takings law is very complicated, and if, basically, the gist of it is that if you compromise a property owner's property to such a degree that they can't use it for anything, you have to compensate them for it.
Yeah, and Mayor, thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate that, and I suspected that would be the response as well, but I wanted to kind of hear that, so, thank you, Ryan.
Okay, council, any other questions? All right, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 726, adding new chapter 19.285 to Federal Way Revised Code for Historic Preservation, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington relating to the protection and preservation of landmarks, and adding new chapter 19.285 to the Federal Way Revised Code.
All right, at this time, Councilmember Wosowski, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the July 5th, 2017 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion, any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Burbidge?
No, I'm sorry.
All right, I have people with their microphones on, I'm sorry. Is there anybody, all right, is there any other discussion? All right, hearing, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes, congratulations, everyone. We have a historic preservation ordinance, well, next meeting. All right, second reading, Council Bill 725, Zayo Franchise Ordinance Amendment, this is, again, second reading, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 725, Zayo Franchise Ordinance Amendment, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, amending the non-exclusive franchise granted to Zayo Group LLC to occupy rights of way of the City of Federal Way, Washington, within the specified franchise area for the purposes of installing fiber optic network within and through the City of Federal Way.
All right, Councilmember, Councilmember DuKlo?
I move approval of the, whoops. I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion, any further There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Council reports. Councilmember Asafadossa.
Thank you. So, on June 10th, during the Flag Day, I was, I attended the Valley Civil Disturbance Unit training, and Federalway is a member city of the, of this group. And the whole training was around trying to separate criminal behavior from organized protest. And so, my takeaway from that was that in order to support our police officers who are on-site during a civil protest is to come up with an ordinance for some of the activities, such as, one of the examples they used is like, you know, to maybe have an ordinance so people don't come worrying or covering their faces with masks and stuff, because they can't enforce that on-site. There's got to be an ordinance that the city puts on. So, there was a request by all the cities who were present to see if they can draft a language for all of us to use and implement. So, hopefully, that will happen, so they can, so we can at least have that language. And then, on June 14th, during the neighborhood community meeting, I was at the Public Issues Committee of Sound Cities, and the conversation was around a new levy that King County is going to put on, which is on Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy. So, that would add about $60.5 million if passed, and it's a 20 cents per thousand valuation rate. So, since this is going on the ballot, I would like for that presentation to actually come here and have King County staff present it to us, so we understand how it's going to impact our city, and how it's going to impact the voting, or our voting, so we are citizens, and we can be informed on this issue. And also, they have, during the presentation, they talked about exemptions or rebates for people who are on fixed income. And so, there are opportunities, but I believe informing and giving this to the public would be very helpful. And then, coming up on a personal note, on July 4th, well, during the week of July 2nd through the 8th, there's going to be an Ethiopian Sports Federation in North America is going to come here. It's unfortunate, we didn't have a large enough venue to accommodate the influx of that, so it's going to be in Renton in Seattle. And I'm involved, and I'm their local contact, one of the local contacts. So, if I'm not here at the July 4th event, you'll understand where I'm at. And this week, I'm going to be attending the AWC with my fellow council members. And that, and my present, my comments.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Rosowski?
Well, Councilmember Asafadossa is busy, and I would like to thank you for representing us on that Valley Civil Disturbance Committee. Yeah, we've been, we've been really busy the last couple of weeks, and another couple of busy weeks going forward. Just a couple of things I want to talk about. The Neighborhood Connection Meeting we had last week at Decatur High School, very nicely done by the mayor and the staff. It was a really lively discussion. There was good attendance, and the people who were there asked some tremendous questions about what's going on in the city, and I just thought it was really lively. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we have a few more of these scheduled for the rest of the year.
Maybe about one more.
Maybe one more? Okay. I encourage our citizens to come to that meeting. If you have any questions, if you have any issues, that's a great place to come, to hear what's going on, and then also, you know, pose those questions that are important to you. And lastly, it was really neat to see the Performing Arts and Events Center press release today. It's just an exciting time. We're getting close, just to see Teresa discuss the different acts and, you know, different things that are coming to, that we're going to see perform at this center. It's just really exciting, and I'm glad about the buzz that's going on with regard to this. So, anyway, that's it.
Very good. Councilmember Hana?
Thank you. We celebrated Flag Day two Saturdays ago, and I'd like to thank those who participated, and our King County Council Member for his support. I'd also like to thank the Federalway Seropnumus Club, of which I am president until July 1st, or, well, June 30th is my last day as president, and then I'm the ex-president for a year. But we have worked with the King County Council Member for a number of years now. It's a good relationship, and with the King County, who helps the flags and the flagpoles and the lighting in the City of Federalway. So, it was a great event, and thank you for everyone who came and who were part of the program. I was at the press, press conference today for the PAC, and it was very impressive. We're having a gala on September 9th with a dinner and a performance by Rain, and my comments are mine, of course, are only in my comments, but I am concerned with the cost of the gala. It is, it starts at $250 for the dinner and prime seats, then $200 for dinner and seats, and performance only is $125 or $80. And I'm concerned that, I go to a lot of fundraisers throughout the year, and I put on fundraisers, and I think that this is pretty expensive, and I'm concerned that this is a People's Performing Arts Center and Event Center, and I'm concerned that we are pricing people out of this event. So, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Copeng?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, was at the PAC press conference today, and I'm certainly looking forward to the August 19th opening, which the entire community will be able to be a part of. We're going to have five hours, at least, of people being able to tour the facility and events surrounding it. So, it's definitely, the community building with a lot of activities that the entire community is going to be able to participate in. So, definitely looking forward to that. Also, wanted to say, I was really, really busy these last couple of weeks, going to different ribbon cuttings, and it was actually pretty exciting to see, in addition to the Home &amp; Home and Teletron Luxury Lifestyle Ribbon Cutting and the KBS Washington Ribbon Cutting that the mayor mentioned in his report, I also attended the Advanced Auto Parts Ribbon Cutting on a Pacific Highway, the Amethyst Signs and Graphics Ribbon Cutting, and the Cogent Ribbon Cutting happened last, what, Thursday night? So, I just, again, great activity. There's a lot of people that believe in Federalway and its future, and I think we have, we really, we're on the cusp of some great things happening. And I know change is, it's certainly challenging, but there are people that are buying in with their livelihoods to make a future here in Federalway, and I just really appreciate seeing that from them. And I also am looking forward to traveling to Vancouver for a conference, the AWC Conference, and definitely look forward to a robust report next council meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. This has been a great meeting, and I'd like to thank our guests that are in the audience, and Commissioner Fassos, who's still here, and it's 10:30. So, you're the first elected official that I've seen that has stayed here this long, so thank you, seriously. Moving forward, you know, I can't stress it enough, and I know that my colleagues here on the dais will agree with me, that Federalway is a great place to live, work, eat, and be merry, essentially, and I love that. And today, I had the chance to go to City Hall, go to the press conference that we had, which, listening to what the, what the upcoming shows will be, just made me really excited. And I'm looking forward to asking for my wife for the approval in our House budget for, to become season-holder, season-ticket holders. So, I'm looking forward to that. Teresa, I don't know where you're at, but amazing work. I appreciate all the effort that you've done. And more importantly, it was interesting, because after that press conference, I had the chance to spend a little time with former Mayor Mary Gates, our Deputy Mayor June Burbage, and Betty Huff, and those are just some of, even Joanne Paquette was a part of that. And it was just really neat to be in their company, knowing how much, how hard they fought to make this happen. And I know that my colleagues have all talked about this, but it's really, it's a surreal moment, when you can just stop everything and really think about that. And here we are, you know, from, from The Beatles to, to comedy, a comedian who's been on the same presence of Jerry Seinfeld and Ray Romano, two of my favorite comedians. I mean, how exciting is that? And, you know, there's, I mean, we have acrobats in the mix, so this is definitely becoming a family-centered place, and that means a lot to me. And I know that Teresa is working really hard to make sure that our schools have the opportunities to be a part of this as well, so that we can expose the world to our kids from pre-K and on up. And so, I was just really excited. After that, I went to, I went to just drive around, and, you know, I'm seeing the further developments of mod pizza. I'm really thrilled to see that, and I'm very excited about that development, and I'm anxious to find out. I see Tim Johnson in our audience, and I'm hoping to find out when the opening date of that will be. And then, I had the opportunity to stop by Fusion. You know, as we all know, they are moving, and they're going to be moving right next door to Poverty Bay. And how incredible is it when we can see nonprofits and coffee combined together and change the world, essentially? And so, I'm really excited about the new partnership that's being created through there, and had a chance to tour and the facility, and I'm quite pleased that the volunteers that are working, you know, had many good things to say about, you know, their dealings, if you will, with City Hall, and how things have been quite efficient. And, you know, and I know that, you know, while we may not be perfect all the time, we're striving to make continuous improvements and tweak and fix, and make sure that we can continue to be a place where businesses want to do business here in Federalway, because our processes and the permitting are efficient. And also stopped by Home &amp; Home, as we've heard my previous colleagues stating that. I had a chance to tour that. I felt like I was in a completely different world, and so it was kind of interesting to, just to walk around. And then, of course, I stopped by Poverty Bay to get my nice little cold brew, which is fantastic. I also had the chance to attend the Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Meeting, I believe, last week, and so it was always good to hear the conversations of all the things that are happening for us in terms of building a strong economy here in Federalway. I think that's so, so important. And I also had the opportunity to attend a BSU at Thomas Jefferson High School Club, BSU Club. I met with them and talked about Federalway, talked about what can we do better. And I did that because I was not able to attend their Save Our Streets event. And, you know, these are youth that not only met with the governor a day after I met with them, but these are youth that are just trying to make Federalway a great place, like we, like we all of us are doing. So, I was really impressed with them, and look forward to continue to build a relationship with them, and letting them know that I'm only a phone call away. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will end my report.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember DuKlo?
Good. You all can have the optimism there, because I'm going to be a downer in a couple of things here. I, too, went to the Neighborhood Connection Meeting, and I really felt it wasn't as well-attended as I thought it would be. We, the whole floor was empty down there, and, you know, we really usually had a very, very good turnout there, and I was a little disappointed, and I wasn't sure if maybe we didn't get the word out, or maybe it meant that everybody was feeling well, but-
I think it was a huge space. We had about 100 people there-
Yeah.
-and that's usually about, that's actually one of the larger ones we've had. I think just that we had just a huge room. That was part of it.
Anyway, it just, it just kind of felt that way, and-
Yeah.
I also went to the, the press conference this morning with the PAC. I thought the attendance was good there. It was really exciting, seeing, seeing it coming to life, and I'm really looking forward to it opening up. It was nice to meet some of the people that will be performing there on a regular basis. And this is something that I've worked on for the entire time I've been on the council. We bought the property my first term on the council, and actually, it was Deputy Mayor Burbage and I sitting in the office one day, because it was supposed to be two different projects, and I read the concepts of both, and I happened to comment to her, couldn't we combine these? And she said, "Yes, we can," and she told me about McIntyre Hall. And we took one of our buses and made a field trip up there to tour that place and learn about it, and talk to the, the person that ran it there, and get ideas from her. And, and I, we put it together and made it one building instead of two separate buildings. And I think that was a very, very smart move. So, that was a very worthwhile time. Yeah, I have a concern when I, because, as I said this before, that going into the next biennium, looking at our level of service and the amount of income that's coming in, is, they're not going to meet. And we need to talk about that, but it's, the problem is, there's so many other agencies. Sound Transit hit us, hit us with a high tax. I think Lake Haven is going to raise its rates. The Fire Department, I think, is going to do something, and we're sitting here, and we haven't discussed this, and I really think we need to have a study session on what we're going to do for the next biennium. And so, I would like to put that request in, that we have a study session and talk about possibilities here, because our people are going to be taxed out of it. And Sound Transit does worry me. Yes, they're going to relocate businesses, but they may relocate them out of our city if they can't find a place here. And what are we going to do with that loss of revenue? That's a real concern for me. And I really, I hate to end on a downer here, but I think we need to be realistic, and we need to be talking about this and trying to plan for it. And so, I'm going to be a downer and make sure that that's on everybody's mind, and, you know, I know I will bring it up again in FedRAC, and see if we can schedule a study session to look at, to look at the next biennium. It'll come up faster than we know.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Burbage?
Thank you very much. We covered an amazing amount of ground this evening, passing these various measures. Each of these measures represents a great deal of work by our staff, and I want to express my appreciation. There's so much going on in our city that when you look at it as a whole, in particular, it's, it's so very impressive, and we have, we have a great deal more to come. I was very excited to be able to attend the press conference for the PAC this morning, and appreciated the live entertainment, the dancers and the pianist. That was terrific, to walk in the door and have all of that going on, and then to have the video shared and the announcements. This first season, it has been announced, it's going to include just some very fascinating, a very fascinating range of work, when you consider that we'll have classical, dance, jazz, world arts, and comedy, and Grammy Award-winning artists, Cronos Quartet, Roseanne Cash, Branford Marsalis, and many others as well. And certainly, that opening day on Saturday, the 19th, with ribbon cutting at 11:00 is going to be wonderful. All the local performing residence groups will be there, and there'll be tours, the whole day there will be free to the public, and so I'm hoping we'll have a huge attendance. I know that the season tickets are already selling. I don't know what the total is up to now, but I know that that has been ongoing today. And people can come to the temporary ticket office, right downstairs, just off the lobby. Or can, I think, people can do it online as well. I was also pleased to hear coverage. I occasionally listen, or very frequently, actually, to a radio station called KNKX. It's the former KPLU station that features quality news and a lot of jazz. They had excellent coverage of this. They had excellent coverage of this plan this morning for the, the news conference, and it was repeated a number of times. It was just great fun to hear that. I also want to thank Councilmember Asafadossen also for her representing the city, and a couple of occasions especially, when most of the rest of us took advantage of attending a couple of other things, so thank you for that, and also for your ongoing work representing us on the, the PIC for the, for the city, the Sound Cities, excuse me, Association. So, I'm looking forward to more ribbon cuttings. This past week has been filled with them. We have a lot of exciting businesses that are here now, but we have more in the works. So, again, thanks to the staff, and thanks to my colleagues.
All right. With that, we are adjourned. Great meeting, everyone.